Now I'll call the meeting to order. We got a full house tonight. Everybody that's here, welcome. I know we've got some leadership Brownsville folks here, so welcome. Those that are tuning in at home, thanks for watching, and let's get the meeting started.
Good evening. Would everybody please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings we have in Brownsville. Help us not to forget our blessings when we're facing obstacles. And Lord God, we know that your word says that the wisdom of man is foolishness compared to the wisdom of God. So, Lord God, tonight we ask you for your wisdom. Help us to be willing to give up our foolishness, our wisdom, for yours. And Lord God, we ask you to lead and guide our mayor and our city commissioners and every presenter here today for the best for the city of Brownsville in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our own Texas land, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
At this time, I will read the notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to chapter 551, title 5 of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, December 3, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with the first proclamation. That would be with Putnatt Elementary Blue Ribbon School. If you all would please come up.
Whoever, who's yet, come on up.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome. So this is the proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Annie S. Putnatt Elementary School. Whereas Annie S. Putnatt Elementary is located at 730 East 8th Street in Brownsville, Texas, Annie S. Putnatt Elementary, in partnership with parent and community stakeholders, is committed to the empowerment of students to become lifelong learners and productive citizens in a highly scientific and technologically advanced global society. Whereas approximately 570 students from pre-kender, three-year-old through fifth grade are enrolled at Annie S. Putnatt Elementary, staff and students are led by Principal Dr. Aidé Vázquez, Assistant Principal Vanessa Cisneros, and Dean of Instruction Corina Tabárez. Whereas, on September the 26th, 2019, the United States Secretary of Education announced the designation of Annie S. Putnatt Elementary as a 2019 National Blue Ribbon School. The coveted National Blue Ribbon Schools Award affirms the hard work of educators, family, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging and engaging content. Whereas, the USDE recognized Annie S. Putnatt Elementary under the exemplary high-performance category for being among the state of Texas's highest-performing schools based on their overall academic excellence. And whereas, the Brownsville City Commission recognizes the commitment to excellence by Annie S. Putnatt Elementary School students, parents, faculty, staff, and administration to earn the National Blue Ribbon School designation. School administrators would like to thank all teachers, students, parents, and community members. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Annie S. Putnatt Elementary School and encourage the residents of Brownsville to prioritize the education of our future leaders today for the promise of tomorrow. Done on this, the third day of December 2019, signed the mayor and the city commission.
If anybody would like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Vázquez, Principal at Putnatt Elementary, and I'm here proudly representing all our community, our students, parents, and teachers that were not able to be here, but I thank you for the recognition, and we are working very hard to educate our students in the community as best as we can and get them ready for the real world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Gutierrez, Superintendent. First of all, thank you so much for recognizing the work of our staff and our students in our community. Putnatt Elementary being a National Blue Ribbon School means that about 334 schools in the nation were given this award, and Brownsville ISD was honored to have two schools that received a National Blue Ribbon out of 330-plus schools in the nation, which was Hudson Elementary, which we recognized at the last meeting, and now Putnatt Elementary. So thank you so much, and we always look forward to, with the partnership with the city, as a school district as well. So thank you for the recognition again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for believing in BISD because we are the best, because of people like you who serve our community, who believe in us and never stop coming to give us our praise, because this is a wonderful thing that is happening. And I thank God every day for everyone who comes and gives to us and believes in us. And I ask that God bless your very Merry Christmas and have a blessed and prosperous 2020. May we shine and do 100 times better than we have today. Thank you so very much.
I want to thank you for recognizing Putnatt Elementary and previously for recognizing Hudson Elementary. I'm very proud to say my wife at the Hudson was part of that. This is not the first time Brownsville's done this. Our school system has had a history of blue ribbons. Southmost was, is, a blue ribbon forever, and so is Becks, and I believe Victoria Heights as well. And we have some national, what was it, recognition on some other things that are similar to blue ribbons. So we've, you know, made this school system what it is, and you have every right to be proud of us. And I want to quote something that Cecilia Abbott said today, and this is what you need to go ahead and let this be the buzzword. BISD is the place to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next proclamation we have is Planned Parenthood South Texas HIV/AIDS Awareness Month. If y'all could please come forward.
So this is the proclamation of the City of Brown, City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating December 2019 as HIV/AIDS Awareness Month. Whereas Planned Parenthood South Texas has been a leader in the fight to prevent, detect, and treat sexually transmitted disease infections since its founding 80 years ago. And whereas this work has for decades included efforts to provide medically accurate information to the community about HIV and AIDS, and whereas Planned Parenthood provides HIV testing at low or no cost in order to improve the health of the community, and whereas the growing HIV rate in Cameron County is a public health concern, and whereas Planned Parenthood is launching a new health campaign in the Rio Grande Valley aimed at reducing the stigma surrounding HIV and AIDS, increasing awareness of risk, and encouraging HIV testing. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate December 2019 as HIV/AIDS Awareness Month in Brownsville, Texas. Done on this, the third day of December 2019, signed by the mayor and the city commission.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you for the work you do.
Anybody would like to speak?
In the early 1980s, when this disease first made itself known, this nation lost about a half million people over the course of about a decade or more. A generation of artists and activists, intellectuals, and thinkers, and their loss will be felt forever. Today, this is a disease that we understand, that we can help people live long prosperous lives with. Yet still, certain populations do not have access to the care they need to have that prosperous, healthy, long life when infected with HIV. People of color, women, African-American communities have been those who have been affected and continue to have the hardest time accessing care. Planned Parenthood is proud to stand with the community in efforts to be sure that no one is left behind, everyone knows of the resources available to them, and that everyone has access to the care that they deserve. Thank you for recognizing that work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep it short, because I don't have a lot of voice, but I do want the few words that I am able to say is thank you on behalf of the Habla con tu hermana program, which is the education program at Planned Parenthood. We want to thank you for this recognition, the proclamation, and we are going to continue working very hard to educate the community on this very important issue. And now we're going to do it even better with your support. Thank you so much again.
Next, we have the Arbor Day proclamation. If y'all would please come forward.
You ready?
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating December 7, 2019, as Arbor Day in our city. Whereas, the first Arbor Day was celebrated in 1872 in Nebraska as a special day for the planting of trees and has grown to thousands of celebrations in communities across our nation each year. And whereas, trees promote human health and well-being, add beauty to communities, improve water quality and quantity, reduce the erosion of precious topsoil, and provide shade, clean air, and habitat for wildlife. And whereas, the city of Brownsville continues to demonstrate its commitments to trees by conducting ongoing tree planting projects in city-owned parks, right-of-way, medians, and other city properties. And whereas, the city of Brownsville committed to partner with the city of Lubbock to join together to celebrate a symbolic tree exchange known as Trees Across Texas Program in honor of A.E. Jean Quest, whereby each city plants a tree indigenous to the habitat, the partnering city, as a sign of friendship and as a way of promoting the planting of trees within the community. And whereas, the city of Brownsville commends the city of Lubbock and its citizens for planting a tree in Lubbock, Texas, to honor Brownsville, Texas. And on April 26, 2019, the city of Brownsville will plant a tree in honor of the city of Lubbock for its commitment to planting trees in recognition that trees not only beautify but benefit our landscape and environment. Whereas, the city of Brownsville is committed to maintaining a healthy urban forest by promoting tree planting to increase shading, absorb CO2, decrease associated costs of uninhabited or unabated stormwater, lower heating and cooling costs, and provide habitat for urban wildlife. And whereas, the city of Brownsville has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 20 consecutive years by the National Arbor Day Foundation and the National Association of State Foresters, now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby designate December 7, 2019, as Arbor Day in our city, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by planting and caring for trees, supporting the efforts to protect our trees, and thus promoting the well-being of this and future generations. Done on this, the third day of December 2019. And I think that was April 2020 that there was a time there. Okay, just to clarify, that's going to be this April.
We have a celebration coming up this Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00 at the Cypress Park in La Posada. Everyone's invited.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Roy Leus. I'm your city forester. I would like to thank each one of you for supporting, support, for your support on the Arbor Day proclamation presented this evening, celebrating 20 consecutive years as Tree City USA. In order to achieve this recognition, the city, the Tree City USA Arbor Day Foundation requires that the communities meet a four core standards of sound urban management. One is to maintain a tree board or department, which we utilize the beautification committee as, and having a community tree ordinance or landscape ordinance we currently have established in 1999 to present. We need to also spend at least $2 per capita on urban forestry. This is a combined efforts by Parks Department, Public Works Greens Division, and the Brownsville Beautification Committee. Also, we would have to celebrate an Arbor Day. I am honored to announce that our city is one of 3,400 communities that have made this commitment on becoming a Tree City USA. And we, and in Texas, we are one of 88 communities with this achievement. In closing, I would like to invite everyone to our Arbor Day Celebration event this upcoming Saturday, December 7, at La Posada Montesuma Cypress Preserve located at 1325 La Posada Drive, from 8:00 to 11:00. We will be handing out Hong Kong orchid seedlings that were germinated from seeds in our Public Works Greenhouse. There will also be trees given away from healthy communities of Brownsville with a grant provided by the Apache Grant. Trees will be handed out on Saturday while supplies last. At this time, I would like to present to Honorable Mayor and Commissioner our 20-year anniversary award, and thank you once again for your support on this Arbor Day.
All right. Saludos, y'all. My name is Oscar Sertucha. I'm the chair for the Brownsville Beautification. And I just want to thank you all for the recognition, and I'll keep it pretty short. You know, we are, we want to invite the whole community to swing by and join us for Arbor Day Celebration, again, December 7, from 8:00 to 11:00 AM at the Posada Montesuma Cypress Preserve. We will be having, we are, you know, announcing a challenge goal for 20,000 trees in the year 2020. And even though it's an ambitious goal, I think with the help of, you know, different nonprofits and other, you know, private organizations in the community, I think we can get it done. And we want to invite all of y'all to participate in different planting events in your districts, and just, you know, get all the full support, because I think we can really do something great with this, with these planting events. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I did leave you all a packet. The Arbor Day has got information regarding planting and what's up.
I hope there's a tree in here.
Thanks.
Next, we have Mr. Pete Ramírez's proclamation. If you would please come forward.
So this is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Pete Ramírez. Whereas Pete Ramírez was born and raised in Brownsville, Texas. Pete began practicing the martial art of karate in August 1978. On September 26, 1982, Pete earned a black belt by then-world kickboxing champion Ismael Roiz. That same year, Pete began teaching karate locally to the people of Brownsville. 1985, Pete graduated from Gladys Porter High School in Brownsville, Texas. Whereas martial arts provides discipline, a fitness regimen, and a form of self-defense that's useful for all ages. Whereas in 1991, Pete Ramírez earned the distinguished Golden Greek Award by the Amateur Organization of Karate. Additionally, Pete is the recipient of the National Black Belt Title as a member of the It Ain't Easy Team. For 15 consecutive years, he won Instructor of the Year from the Amateur Organization of Karate. Pete's most cherished memory is playing a fight scene in the movie Sidekicks with martial arts icon Chuck Norris. Whereas for the past 12 years, Pete Ramírez has expanded his knowledge of martial arts by studying jiu-jitsu under mixed martial arts fighter Luis Vega and earning a purple belt. And whereas after 41 successful years educating the people of Brownsville, Texas, and bestowing the discipline of martial arts to the community, Pete Ramírez gives thanks to the Lord, his beautiful wife, Marvis, and dedicated son, Angel Ramírez. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Pete Ramírez and encourage the residents of Brownsville to celebrate his contributions to our community through martial arts. Done on this, the third day of December 2019. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for your teacher, your lessons of self-defense. Thank you.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to the Lord Jesus Christ. I think of him first before anything that I do. Thank you to the mayor and the commissioners for this recognition. Ms. Galansky, thank you for pushing the issue here. I know you worked very hard for it. My student, ex-police officer, Mr. Falcon Rivera, thank you for this. It's them that wanted to recognize. Yes, we'll be there. I'd like to end by saying that when it comes to karate, Brownsville's well-represented. I fought everywhere, Guatemala, Canada. Where are you from? Brownsville, Texas. Where is that at? Right at the tip of Texas. A couple of months ago, my nephew was in Houston. Chuck Norris called him. He wanted him to present for him, and he was doing his performance, and he's performing, and there's a huge scream, and he says, "Alex Mancias, Brownsville, Texas." All right? Thank you for the recognition. God bless.
Thank you.
At this time, we do have some, it's the public comment period. I will call your name if you would please come up. You do have three minutes. Ms. Yolanda Spies?
First one is Yolanda Spies? Okay.
The next one that I have is the several people that signed up for the LGBTQ.
Okay.
If they can have a representative or everyone will speak.
Yeah, because this part is, it's limited to five speakers. Who else did we have sign up?
We also have Mr. Eugene Fermandes.
Okay. Gene, come on up.
Three hours, did you say?
Three minutes. Which for you is tough, I know.
I came before you four months ago with a statement on the, say, the crisis that existed at that time at the Jago plantation. And I am happy to say that four months later, we've evolved into a condition whereby we are literally on to the next step. Over this past four months, I have averaged about maybe 10 contacts per month with PUB, Rabbikishner, and all of those entities in order to do core samplings to determine what the clay level is in the rosaca bed in order to evacuate that and then to ultimately refill it with water and save those beautiful trees. I believe that there is a report, or a soon-to-be a report, on city manager's desk that is from PUB, that shows their findings. The core borings have been done, and they are, even in layman's eyes, we have enough clay content there that we, it is good news for us, so it will retain the water. The communication, I would wish that would, that would continue. I know that the commissioners have done a beautiful job of communicating with me, and I dearly appreciate that. I have also done my own part in communicating this project to the world. I just wrote a book, and it's on Amazon Worldwide, and it has the Jago plantation in there. And for lack of a better name, I figured that I would name the book after myself.
That's not you.
No, but it has little vignettes of history in our part of the country. And most definitely, the plantation culture that was down on the Delta area there is so beautiful. The park that is being assembled now, the steps that are being taken in order to build us a beautiful park, is going to be all part of preserving that beautiful culture for us. Please, keep in communication with me, and if there is anything that I can do, 25 hours a day, don't hesitate to call.
Thank you. The LGBTQ speakers are actually, it's an agenda item, so I don't...
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe they could speak during the item to make space.
Either way, whatever, whatever they'd like.
Okay, they'll wait.
You want to wait? Sure?
The next person I have for public comment is Logan Gowan.
Okay.
The next person I have is Bill Burke.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to talk about zoning. That really puts a crash on this wonderful celebration. I love trees. Trees is the, is the, one of the ways of fighting climate change, and we need more. But first, I want to thank you all for restoring access to public comment. I wouldn't, I'm only here because I didn't have to get here an hour or two before the meeting started in order to sign up for public comment, so thank you. A couple of months ago, I was unable to attend any of the meetings regarding a spot zoning change in my neighborhood, which is in one of the near downtown districts and also in In addition, excuse me, zoning rules require off-street parking of two paved spaces per unit. The people who got the zoning change that I was talking about, they got a change from Residential A, which was the whole district, the whole, what is now the Overlay District, was once all Residential A, to Residential G. And they got it only because they wanted a porch or a shade extension which was going to interfere with the Residential A setback from the curb or from the fence. As a result, they got a zoning change which also allows them to turn their house, which is on too small a lot for a duplex in Residential A, to have a duplex in Residential G. They probably are not going to do that, but their, whoever buys the house may have that opportunity, increasing the value of the land for somebody who would like to be an absentee landlord. They also have, so the Historic Overlay District, which has plenty of front yards with lawns, trees, and shrubbery, now is starting to have many front yards which are concrete. There's a problem. The mandated concrete paving on the front of many of these, of these new denser housing is pouring a lot of rainwater into the streets, which is going to reduce... Am I finished?
Yes. Summary, in summary.
In summary, it's not so historic anymore. It's becoming less attractive, and the property values are not rising. I would ask that there be a moratorium on spot zoning while people in our neighborhood are trying to come up with a solution that satisfies everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bill. Is that all?
Yes.
Anybody on the LGBTQ issue, if you'd like to, if you maybe need to leave early or may not be here for that item, you want to speak now? Floor's yours if you'd like. I know somebody else signed up. No? You're good?
Good evening, Commission. My name is Stephanie Dominguez, and I'm a resident of Brownsville. I work for Planned Parenthood South Texas. Through my work, I've had the pleasure and honor to meet people of varied, varied ages, backgrounds, identities, and expressions. Is it, is it, sorry. It is a beautiful thing to witness someone being exactly who they are meant to be, to express themselves in a way that honors who they are, and to share the gift of their love with whomever their heart connects. On June 22nd of this year, Brownsville celebrated its first city-supported Pride event. That evening, when the drag queens and kings took the stage, I was able to take a step back from my work and look around at the crowd. What I observed was joy in its purest form. There were countless smiling faces, but there were also tear-filled eyes. A friend standing near me greeted me with a hug, and when she pulled away, I realized she was crying. She told me how beautiful it was to witness every person's expression of love in Brownsville. She told me how friends of hers were crying because they thought they would never see a pride in Brownsville. Their tears were tears of joy. That night, all I heard were expressions of immense happiness and appreciation for what Joe pulled together with the support of the city. For these reasons and for all the reasons you will hear from people who support the creation of an LGBTQ+ task force, I ask the Commission to vote yes on the agenda item. I will end with a quote by Max Dupree. "We need to give each other the space to grow, to be ourselves, to exercise our diversity. We need to give each other space so that we may both give and receive such beautiful things as ideas, openness, dignity, joy, healing, and inclusion." Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is consent agenda items.
How many motions?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda, but can we take the minutes of November 5th out of order? Or out and we'll, we need to suggest a change.
So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the November 5th minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
So on the November 5th minutes, under public hearing number one, it says that Michelle Sanchez did not, or did express, she expressed support of the Fronton Street. I think that is a misstatement, and I assume she's here to once again request that the name stay as near her family drive, family drive. So I would ask that the minutes reflect that change.
Sure. That was my recollection as well. Do I have a second on that? You're asking the minutes be approved with that change, right?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Okay.
So on the November 5th minutes, under public hearing number one, it says that Michelle Sanchez did not, or did express, she expressed support of the Fronton Street. I think that is a misstatement, and I assume she's here to once again request that the name stay as near her family drive, family drive. So I would ask that the minutes reflect that change.
Sure. That was my recollection as well. Do I have a second on that? You're asking the minutes be approved with that change, right?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Next, we have public hearings. Public hearing number one, public hearing in action on Resolution Number 2019-092 to rename McNair Family Drive from Palm Boulevard to Sam Pearl Boulevard to East Fronton Street.
Yes, sir.
This item was tabled on a November 5th meeting, and so is back on. I'm gonna start by giving a quick recap. Resolution Number 2019-069, approved on July 30, 2019, adopted and implemented a street renaming policy. On October 14, 2019, a petition was filed to rename the street back to Fronton. The petitioners is requesting to commemorate the original street name of Fronton Street. Of historic importance is the fact that Fronton Street is one of the original townsite streets conveyed to the city of Brownsville in 1850. It is believed that East Fronton Street predates Brownsville when a river ford located at El Ramineno was used by locals to cross the Rio Grande River to travel to Point Isabel, which was originally named El Fronton de la Santa Isabel, which was originally named, I mean, or El Fronton for short. The street also played an important role in the 1900s in the development and growth of the city of Brownsville upon completion and arrival of the commercial railroad. A petition has been signed by no less than 20, 75% of the property owners abutting the subject's street address. East Fronton Street consists of 89 properties with 81 property owners abutting the street. This requires a minimum of 61 signatures, and the applicant has submitted 63 signatures in favor of the street name change, which represents a percentage of 78%, exceeding the minimum threshold of 75% of the property owners. Written notice of the public hearing with the proposed name change and the date and the time of the hearing was sent to all properties, all owners of real property, at least 10 days prior to the public hearing. A notice of public hearing was published in the newspaper on Sunday, November 17, and Sunday, December 1, 2019. On November 5th, there were six signatures that were brought into question that appeared to, on the petition, for and against the name change. These property owners were contacted, and affidavits indicating their preference were signed and authorized, all in favor of the East Fronton Street. Votes and signatures have been also validated. The affidavit was prepared by the city attorney, and do need to mention that there was at least one letter, there was one letter submitted opposing the, the name change. We also received a second letter, but that was unclear. I think there was suggesting that the street be divided, half for, half against.
Okay. So you stated that the, that the signatures that were in question, or at least that were brought up at the last meeting, have been verified?
Yes, by the property owners.
Okay, all right.
Can you tell me what staff members from the city went and verified all of that information?
It was a staff member from the Engineering Department.
Did, can you tell me who?
I beg your pardon?
You can't tell me who?
In particular?
Right.
Yeah. Oh, here he is, I'm sorry.
He's a notary.
He's a notary as well, and at times he was accompanied by other staff members as well.
Perfect.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure. Well, it's a public hearing, so go ahead. Sure.
So I had just one question, and that is, when you say the signature number, is that one lot, one vote? Or how is that determined?
I need to refer that to the city attorney, yes.
You don't know?
Well, it was, it was by property owners.
Yes, Commissioner, that was, we interpreted what the policy that was passed by this commission, what it said in regards to the process in order to have a proper petition before the commission. And the language in the, in the manuals says that 75% of owners of properties are abutting the street. So that's what the manual says, and that is, that is what the, the city has been going by.
I guess what I'm asking for is clarification. For instance, if, if myself and my husband own a lot, is that two votes or one?
Going by what the manual says, it says that owners as recognized by the County Apprecial District. So if a property had multiple owners, that property could get multiple votes.
Is that what most other cities do?
I'm not sure what other cities do. What I can tell you is what my interpretation of this is. And I, and I look to see what, what sort of guidance we get from judicial interpretation to items like this. And, you know, the rules of construction say that if you go ahead and pass a Genesis document that says something, we need to give credence and, and credit to every word that is in it. So what our policy says, says owners of properties abutting the street. It doesn't say properties abutting the street. It doesn't say multiple votes per property. It says owners of properties abutting the street as identified by the county, by the CAT. So that is exactly what the department did. They asked me for my legal opinion. I use the best possible rules of construction and guidance that we have in regards to items such as this. And it says that if, if the policy that was passed by this commission says owners of properties abutting the street, it means owners of properties abutting the street. It doesn't say vote per property. It said vote per owner. So that is the, that is the opinion that I gave the city. And based on that opinion, they have found that this petition has met the threshold of 75%.
And that's your opinion as well, counsel?
That is my opinion.
That the application to, to restore the name Fronton meets the criteria in accordance with our policy?
Based on what our, our policy says, yes.
Okay.
So I called several other cities. I cannot tell you who they were at this time, but I have a list. And some of them did not have street naming policies, but the ones that did have street naming policies had a different system and did not count two people, three people. It was one person per, and it was per lot. It didn't mean that somebody had to live there. And the way that they explained it to me was, they said, you know, in your election, do you have people that, in your election, would it be fair to say you're renting, so you don't own the lot, so you don't get a vote because you don't pay taxes in that city? And so it was explained to me like that, and it just really, really confused me why we were doing it the way we were doing it.
Well, and I think an easy way of looking at this is, there may be 200 lots, but there may be 100 owners. So we have 100 people that may vote. One owner may have and own multiple lots. The way the policy is written and as it was approved by this commission, it means that basically one owner of multiple lots gets one vote. It also says that if there is, for example, a lot that is owned by a, by a, by a, by a couple, or perhaps by brother and sister, they have ownership rights, and they would have a vote based on the recognition by our county system. So that is a sound legal opinion that I'm giving in regards to what our manual says. Now, it's, it's a policy manual, and the commission can decide to give it whatever meaning it, it wants. But if you're asking for my legal opinion as to what that says, I think, based on my opinion that I've given to departments, and I, I think I've extended that to the Commissioners as well in the past, I think the petition would meet the 75% threshold.
So if my three children inherit my lot, that's three votes for the lot?
If their three ownership, if they have ownership, all three of them own the lot and they're registered owners of the property, yes.
So they would have more of a voice than me as a widow, who would just have one vote? See, that's where I get off, I get off the rail.
Commissioner, believe me, this has been a long process, and I've heard all sorts of hypotheticals on both sides of the equation, and I think there might be hypotheticals that may lead to unreasonable results. But I'm giving my opinion based on what the policy says. I've, I've heard hypotheticals where perhaps an owner of 100 lots in a subdivision, in 103 lots of division, could be outgored by owners of two lots rather than the owner of 98. And yes, there could be certain hypotheticals that could possibly land us in, in unreasonable situations. Unfortunately, that is the policy that the City Commission passed, and based on what it says, I think that the city Engineering Department has followed the word of, of the policy. And based on what it says there, it would pass a 75% threshold.
So I have a question. So in the policy that we passed, it specifically states that?
Well, that is exactly the problem.
Or is it up to our interpretation as what I'm getting from you, since it's an opinion from the city attorney? I'm just trying to figure out what policy it is that we, that we approved.
Well, what I, as you know, I'm an attorney, so I look to what the courts do in, in interpreting contracts or Genesis documents such as this. And basically, they operate with universal rules of construction that basically says, if you decide to put something in a policy, it's because you meant for it to be there. So you must give credit to every word that is there. Now, as it deals with this policy specifically, it says owners of properties abutting the street. It doesn't say what should have been there if you wanted to give credits to the, to other opinions that may, perhaps may support the other side of this coin. It would have to say multiple owners of multiple properties get multiple votes, no more than one vote per property. That's what the case law says, but that's not what our policy contains. So yes, you're right. If that language was there, my opinion would be different. However, that language is absent. And based on what we do have, I think my, my opinion is sound and is the best opinion that I can give this, this commission. Now, it is only a policy. This commission could decide to give it whatever weight it wants.
Now, during this whole several-month process that we've been dealing with this, do you think that it's exposed maybe some issues with the policy that we have now to where you're gonna have to maybe consider rewriting this going forward?
Well, we've heard a lot of good points from a lot of people here. And what, what's, what's important here is not what I say, it's what the commission wants. If the commission wants a policy that means to do one thing, then it should say that. So bottom line, if after this case, or during this case, the commission feels that that's, that wasn't their true intent, then the commission needs to make that decision. But based on what we have, I think my opinion is sound.
And what I want now is, which is what I've always wanted, is, is for us to comply with the policy as written, which we adopted, obviously, but to be fair and equitable, right, to the parties involved. So if you feel that there's certain issues with this going forward that we need, that maybe makes it less, I guess, less equitable for some of those involved, can you please consider rewriting it or putting some sort of language in there?
I can definitely do whatever the commission instructs me to do.
So for now, we have passed a policy, and he's interpreted it a certain way. So they meet the criteria at this point. So yes, if we want to change the policy, we have to come back and change it.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question on, on businesses that are on Fronton, and how are they treated in terms of, are they, I mean, there could be multiple owners of a business. How do you verify that?
Property. And that's been asked before, and normally what we do is we determine ownership based on, on, on who is the owner of record with, with the CAT. And basically, if it's a corporation, a corporation would have one vote. I mean, you wouldn't have a situation perhaps where you have 1,000 shareholders of one of the corporations, and one lot could then receive 1,000 votes. The owner of record would be the corporation, the corporation would get one vote. And I think that is illustrated by some of the people that opted not to vote, like Union Pacific, which is a huge corporation, and they have one vote if they have one lot, right?
So it's not the business owners, it's the property owner, right? So there could be a business that's run by somebody other than the property owner. So it's the property owners... So, it's the property owners that are allowed to vote on this.
And to read from the policy, this is exactly what it says, "Not less than seventy-five percent of all owners abutting the subject city streets. Owners shall be determined from the current city real property at the law and tax rule." I mean, it's clear that the commission gave us the key as to what we had to use in order to determine ownership, and it says owners shall be determined from the current city real property at the law and tax rule, and that's what the city has used.
Okay. Public hearing, so I know we're going to have speakers, can I just have a show of hands as to who intends to speak on this item? So, I can, the reason being, we have somebody who needs to leave and present something, so I just wanted to be fair with them and their time. If there's only going to be a few, okay, let's go ahead. First speaker, three minutes, and just please tell us your name.
So, my name is Juanrun Hernandez. Commissioners, I'm here. I just request that we follow, I mean, the guidelines were already set in place, and I believe they need to be followed. If you guys have questions, maybe you guys, or it was voted on it, so I hope you guys read it and made a sound decision when you voted on it, right? So, this has been a long road, and we met all the criteria, and we just need you guys to make a decision, whether you guys want to change it, or make a change to it, make it better, make it more equitable. That is prerogative, but please consider that, or make that decision afterwards, like, you have to decide soon, or at least today, on ours. And I believe it's democratic, one property, one property owner, one vote, not by lot, because someone can have as many lots as a bunch of lots, and then that means they'll have a bunch of votes, so does it, doesn't the older people, business owners that are on the same property, don't have a voice? And then that one person can make a decision for everyone who lives in that street? I don't think, I mean, I believe we live in a democratic country, we should have a process where it's fair to all, and not just to a majority owner, or someone, for example, that said they have, they own a company where they have a thousand people who can make a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Michelle Sanchez here, on behalf of to represent the McNair Family Drive Properties in opposition of the current petition. Our main objection to the current petition is the methodology being used to determine that seventy-five percent of the lot owners are in favor of renaming back to Fronton Street. The methodology can best be described as manipulated math. The applicants and staff have adopted the interpretation that you count owners as opposed to lots. Their method allocates only one vote to an owner that has multiple lots. Thus, whether you have three, thirteen, or thirty-three lots, you only count as one vote. Yet, a lot with dual ownership, husband and wife, siblings, gets two votes, or however many owners there might be, if it's inherited by children like you suggested. In addition, they've also excluded from the equation two lots owned by the city, one owned by the railroad, and three lots whose owners are deceased. By the way, there's no such thing as property being owned by a dead person, okay? It passes by law to the heirs. This lowers the Cameron County Appraisal District account number from eighty-six to eighty-one. By excluding those lots as not having a vote, or not being counted. This manipulated math was submitted to the city with the applicant's original petition. City attorney did legal research and came up with a convoluted nineteen-ninety-six case regarding legal construction of the word owners, and some residential covenants and restrictions matter. It is our position that that single case is not controlling on this matter. Admittedly, the city attorney did not do any research on street renaming policies in Texas or the United States. We did extensive research on street renaming policies and could not find one city in Texas or the United States that allows multiple owners of a single lot to have multiple votes. All of the cities surveyed use a one lot, one vote method. We're not attacking the city of Brownsville policy, but the way it's being applied, neither staff nor the city attorney has presented to this commission the opportunity to opine on the appropriate methodology. That issue should have been presented to you all in August, when this application was presented. The street renaming policy is just that, a policy. It's not a statute, it's not an ordinance, it's a policy, and as such, the commission should be able to decide how it wants to apply it. There are four parts with the methodology being presented by staff. Number one is not using all the lots abutting the subject street. As I've already mentioned, they excluded the two lots owned by the city, the railroad, three lots owned by deceased people, six lots not being counted in the equation. That affects the mathematical outcome. Number two, the policy does not specify if the seventy-five percent threshold will be based on lots or Cameron County Appraisal District account numbers. There are a hundred and thirty-nine lots abutting McNair Family Drive, but only eighty-six Cameron County Appraisal District account numbers. Some lots are lumped into one account number if there's a single building on multiple lots. Likewise, an owner can request that their multiple vacant lots be consolidated under one account number. Again, which number is used affects the mathematical outcome. Obviously, seventy-five percent of a hundred and thirty-nine lots is harder to achieve than seventy-five percent of eighty-six account numbers.
Michelle, you're out of time, but can you just summarize it really quick?
I've, Enrique will concede his time to me.
I don't think that's allowed.
I was just going to ask you to summarize in a minute, can you?
I'd like to point out that we don't think that the petition meets the threshold, because if you take sixty-three signatures and subtract sixteen multiple owners, which is a husband and wife, I presume, that leaves them with forty-seven signatures, that only represents fifty-eight percent of the lot owners in the math, and it's all based on math. Since this is the initial case, then under the new policy that was adopted in July, it would have ramifications going forward. I urge the commission to adopt the one lot, one vote methodology, and to clarify the basis of the seventy-five percent threshold will be the number of lots abutting the street or the number of Cameron County Appraisal District account numbers. At the last meeting, I heard many of you say you wanted to get it right. I would say that this is your chance to do so. One vote per lot is the fairest and most common sense way to determine the percentage of supporters for changing a street name. Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would ask that anyone else that wants to exceed their time in their comments be allowed the same amount of time that she was allowed to exceed the three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, staff. Well...
Please state your name.
Ernesto Hernandez Chapam, I'm the owner at four-thirty East Fronton Street. I own a historical building on the, on the Fronton Freight Depot Historical District, okay? And I'm one of the persons that is against, and I've been against this change since the beginning, since May, since November of two thousand and eighteen, as a matter of fact, okay? And, yes, when we talk about math, we should, we could, if we go back to the beginning, when, back to May of two thousand and nineteen, when this, our street name was changed to McNair Drive, McNair Family Drive, there, you know, they forgot to say that there was nineteen initial signatures that were in favor of McNair Family Drive, when there was fourteen initial signatures against it, okay? We were told we weren't supposed to come here, because there was a opposition, so we didn't think it was, we didn't think it was necessary to come at that meeting. So, there was no opposition. But what they didn't tell you is that fourteen of those lot, fourteen of those properties, or those signatures, were all for the McNair properties, okay? Two of them are duplicates, one was for a resident that doesn't own, a resident that doesn't own a property there, okay? Just a little history on the background. Now, if we want to make it right, let's go back to the original. What we, we are being submitted, we were submitted to these rigorous guidelines, and we met them all, okay? And now, every time we come forward and try to bring it to a vote, somebody comes up with a different story, or a different excuse to table it, or whatever whatsoever. Yes, and the last time we tabled this matter was because of six signatures that were supposedly duplicated, but what they didn't tell you is that they used a list that was done back in August, okay? What they didn't tell you was that one of those, one of those six signatures was not an owner of the property, okay? What they didn't tell you was that some of those, some of those signatures, especially one, that the city received an email from, in favor of Fronton Street, was also on that list. I wonder, it's an enumerated list, how did that signature get on that list? Unless they sent it to the country where the property owner lives, and they sent it back Federal Express or someplace, then they'll get, they'll, that's the only way I can see how they got that signature. So, you know, at the end of the day, we're here today for the property owners of East Fronton Street that have properties on that, that live there, that have done their business there since nineteen-ninety-five for ten years, who were born there, who lived there, who call that street their home, and who have made their businesses there, okay? Who collectively pay ninety-three thousand dollars of taxes a year, okay? With a collective value of three million, five hundred thousand dollars of property value. So, we already proved that this, the street was historic, we already told you that it had sentimental values to the people that live there.
Four minutes.
That included the extra time? Okay, sir.
Okay. And I'm almost on here, so...
Just really, I mean, just really quickly, please, otherwise it's going to get out of hand. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, at the end of the day, we have, if we paid ninety-seven thousand dollars in taxes, we have the right to know, we have the right to have the name of the street, or name, to live there and have the name of the street that we want to live there, okay? All right, so, we're here respectfully to ask you to give us our street back, to give us our historical, our beloved historical Fronton Street back.
Buenas tardes, mayor, de esta hermosa ciudad, distinguidos, comisionados. Voy a hacer uso de la palabra brevemente.
Su nombre, por favor.
Yolanda Valtierra Hernandez. Mi dirección es cuatro cero tres y Fronton. Estoy ante ustedes para hacer la petición como habitante del sector de la Fronton Street. Creo y estoy segura que hemos cumplido los residentes de este sector con los requerimientos que la ciudad nos ha marcado. Ustedes pueden ver que mis compañeras me acompañan. No es un sector nuevo, es un sector de personas de tercera edad, la mayoría, que son las que me acompañan donde ha sido un sector que ha vivido, es un sector donde han hecho sus vidas, han, se han casado, han formado sus familias, han hecho de esta ciudad un núcleo bastante fuerte. Me dirijo a ustedes con la convicción de que ustedes tienen un carácter bien formado. La historia se los va a agradecer, sus hijos van a sentirse orgullosos de ustedes. ¿Qué les van a contar a sus nietos cuando estuvieron en este puesto de representantes? Les pido a mis compañeras que se pongan de pie. Señor mayor, comisionados distinguidos, soy reiterativa. Espero que tomen en cuenta las condiciones en que les hemos hecho llegar todos los requerimientos que ustedes nos han marcado. Nuestras firmas han sido auténticas. El historial de esta ciudad se remonta precisamente a la calle Fronton Street. Necesitamos una resolución de ustedes, una resolución perfecta como lo son ustedes. Muchas gracias, buenas tardes.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, good evening. My name's Enrique Melguiso.
Can barely hear you, Mr. Melguiso, we can barely hear you.
I said, "Good evening." My name's Enrique Melguiso. I initiated this process, and I can tell you that it was always done in the utmost and straight manner possible. We can go back and forth right now and discuss one thing or the other. I think that the current figures that have been presented that indicate seventy-five or seventy-eight percent of the lots that are supposedly hand-built has been manipulated. There's a hundred and thirty-nine lots there, and I think that the best manner to conclude this is to acknowledge that, number one, there's a hundred and thirty-nine lots, second, that each lot has an owner, and that owner can vote as many times as he has a vote. Also, that if a wife and a husband live in a home, there should be only one vote, not two votes. So, the way that I see it, it has been manipulated to represent the seventy-five or seventy-eight percent that has been talked about. I appeal to you all to please do the correct thing, do it logically, and I thank you for your time and for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Luis Carlos Rodriguez Niño, sí? Este, mi esposa, mi suegra ya falleció hace diez años, mi esposa es la dueña de la treinta y cuatro y Fronton, bodega de import-export, ¿verdad? Que gracias a Dios nos ha dado esa calle, esa bodega para vivir, sí? Tengo cuatro hijos, universidad terminada, gracias a Dios. Voy a ser muy cortito. Fronton pertenece a Broadville, y Broadville pertenece a Fronton, sí? O sea, yo no tengo nada contra la familia McNair, ni lo conozco, ¿verdad? Pero la Fronton es la Fronton, para mí, para ustedes, y para todos ustedes.
Anybody else? Okay, this is a public hearing, so according to counsel, we can also, we can do the motion to close and the motion to approve or deny at the same time, so we can go ahead and take that up.
I'll move to close the hearing, and I'll move to grant the petition to change the name to, back to Fronton Street.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say that I feel I was initially misled about the will of the people who live on Fronton, and I feel that they have really gone over the top to comply with the policy that we drafted and adopted. And we have a legal opinion supporting all this, and as the district commissioner for District Four that includes Fronton, I would urge and implore my... for District Four, that includes Frontón, I would urge and implore my fellow commissioners and mayor to vote in favor of this motion.
Any further discussion?
I have a comment. So, um, I don't ever want to change the name of a street again based on the firestorm that happened with this one, and I do apologize for underestimating the, um, the firestorm that would come with the suggestion. Um, however, having said that, I do not agree with the interpretation of the policy, and I would say that regardless of which way or which side that you're on, I will say that honestly, understanding that one side or the other is going to be upset no matter which way I vote, but I believe the policy needs to be improved, and for that reason alone, I will vote no.
I echo Commissioner Gowens's sentiment. It, it is difficult, believe me, it's very difficult to, uh, to do this. For some people, it may seem that it's very insignificant, but I know that for a lot of us, it is very important. Uh, but I do feel that the interpretation of the, of the policy, we need to have more clarity. I think that we, it's not as, as you can see, we have two different sides with two different, uh, versions, and it would be a lot easier for me personally to have the policy set in stone, black and white, so that it could be a lot easier for us to make a decision, and not think up here and, and make up, uh, or decide up here which way the policy has to go. Um, I think, uh, administration should, uh, along with the city attorney, work on something so they could just, it could be as easy as possible for us to make that decision. Uh, so based on that, I'm, I'm voting no.
Any further discussion?
Um, I'd like to concur with Commissioner Mungia. I think, um, um, we had the best intentions of adopting a, a good policy, and, uh, you know, my understanding is we took a, this policy right from another city, kind of a cookie cutter approach, which obviously didn't work. Um, so I think it's a lesson learned for us as a commission, to make sure we get it, we get it right, um, the first time, otherwise, it gets very messy and it's, it's unfortunate. Um, but I, I'm gonna vote no as well.
So, um, it's very hard for me to be in this position, um, knowing everything, but what I can tell you is that I came to the city to change how it was, and to change the structure, and to change the way that the public felt about what happened at the city commission. And what I can tell you personally is that every single one of us up here is here for the same reason, and we don't want this to ever happen again, and so I, I feel confident that we will go back and change the policy to be fair to everybody. And, it's come to a way that I feel like a district judge or some type of judge here, that I'm not gonna make everybody happy with what happens today, but, and I have so much respect for them, being in this position now and seeing how I'm going to have to hurt somebody, but I can tell you that I'm one of the commissioners who has been here from the first vote, and I have seen how city staff members have left, and there has been so much chaos and confusion, and the only thing that I can say is it was a failure on our behalf as the city to the public as to what happened, and it's, it's wrong to give this family the street name and then take it away, and it's wrong to have you feeling like we didn't do something that we should have done, and so either way we look at it, you all have lost your street name, although Frontón, and this is something I brought up at our last meeting, Frontón is not gone, Frontón still has the other side of the street. Um, you may not feel that way, but, sorry, I'm just trying to be as transparent and show you why I make my decision, and the position that I'm in, um, to come to the city and try and be fair, and, and sit here only for the only reason that I feel like the city should be more accessible and correct for the public, and so, that's my, the only thing I can tell you.
I would like to also make a comment, but if you have something before. Um, as one of the people here who, coming from a, a family that has land and who knows the process of, of street names, it's really disappointing that you all have been taken advantage of. Mr. McNair belongs to a family that is, um, part of developers, they know the process from, for, um, requesting street name changes, and they abuse the process. If there is a Golansky, um, street, it's because someone selected it that way. We didn't ask for it to, to affect someone. When you want a street name, you, you pay for it, you make the street yourself. You don't go and take someone's history. You don't affect all these families that are around that have formed a community, and for that I thank you, because in the time that I've been here in the committee, you've shown me what true community is like, and I appreciate you.
La señora, usted señora, la me, me tiene fascinada. La felicito con su facilidad de palabras de expresión. Ha hecho muy buen trabajo, me sirve de ejemplo, y me da lástima que no se va a poder lograr lo que ustedes luchan, pero sigan, porque yo los voy, yo los voy a apoyar.
Lo siento mal, yo, señorita. Lo siento mal, yo, porque yo vivo en la cuatro, en la calle cuatro y Frontón, y yo compré ahí, por el val histórico que es. Mi casa fue cantina de personas de color. En todo caso, el nombre debería de aparecer con un nombre de ese tipo de persona. Es histórico y está por demás decirte a cada uno de los aquí presentes la historia de ese sector de la ciudad.
Sí, y entonces nomás...
Eres la que haga conciencia, porque los que estamos aquí tenemos más de treinta, cuarenta años. Ellas nacieron en ese sector, ahí se formaron. Ve a la edad que tenemos, pero usted, sus padres, ahí llegaron a trabajar.
Commissioner, can you wrap it up? Just to spread it up, I'm gonna...
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to engage more than...
The one other thing that I would, I would like to say is, back in May, there was no formal policy on street names, and so I think that was also an advantage to the McNairs, because they were able to, to take advantage of the fact that there were no rules, and so ever since we did adopt a policy, they've done everything within their power to change the ball, to keep the, the line changing for you all, so that you, so no matter what you did, they were always gonna like move the, move the line further, and I'm sorry for that. I'm sorry, like, I wish there was something that I could do for you all.
She's right. There was no policy in place, and it was vague then, and it isn't now, and we have a legal interpretation, and all of you should do your duty and follow the legal interpretation of the policy we have, and, if we want to change it, we can change it for the next time, but there's a policy on the table that we passed, and there is a legal opinion, and you're derelicting your duty to this commission and that community by voting against this. When they complied and came back time and time again, we just got a historical designation from the federal government for this property, partly relying on the name that was given. So, I know how you've stated you're gonna vote, but you haven't called on a vote yet, so I'm still asking you to consider to do the right thing for this community.
(Applause)
Commissioner Anis has called a question. Will you please, uh, the motion on the floor is to approve the petition to change the name or restore the name to Frontón. Those in favor, raise your hand, please. Those against? Motion fails. Sorry, guys, thanks. The, the vote's been taken, guys, sorry, the public hearing's over. Thank you.
(Inaudible).
Pero no por todos, nomás. Y voten, salgan a votar, esa es la forma de...
Order, sorry, unfortunately, the vote failed, public hearing's over. Thanks. So, it was four-three.
Public hearing number two. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen sixty-three, designating a geographic area within the city of Brownsville as downtown reinvestment zone, TURS number three, city of Brownsville, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, mayor and commission members. Uh, this ordinance is for the purpose of creating downtown TURS number three. Your economic development consultant, Travis James with TXP Consultants, here is tonight to work with us to adopt the ordinance and to provide background information on how we structure the project plan and the finance plan, as well as the ordinance tonight. That, I'll let Travis take over.
Great. Thank you, mayor. Commission, it's good to be back in front of you again. As we've talked about in the past, a TURS is a tool used by local governments, cities, counties, and other, uh, local entities to fund public improvements and economic development projects within a geographic zone. As we've talked about in the past, and as you all know, this is not a tax increase, the current tax revenue that the city collects from this zone will continue to go to the general fund. If you pass the ordinance, a portion of future property tax revenue above the base will go into the tax increment fund, and then at the end of the TURS, um, this one is a thirty years, all of the revenue goes back to the general fund. So, this is not a tax increase, it doesn't impact property owners, they're just in this geographic boundary. These are the steps to creating a TURS. Some people call them TIPS, that's tax increment financing. Under the statute, you create a tax increment reinvestment zone. We are at steps three and four. A notice was published November twenty-sixth in the newspaper, so we are on steps three and four, which hold a public hearing, and then you all would go through the process of having the first reading. With that, I'll turn it back over to Rick to talk about the zone.
So, the question before you is why is a TURS a valuable economic development for downtown Brownsville? Uh, this community has already invested significant treasure in Market Square and Brownsville, Performing Arts Academy, as well as the, uh, bus terminal, up of, north of fifty million dollars. Uh, you've also have other organizations making, uh, investments within the proposed TURS boundary. The Midi Cultural District has existing, uh, investments, as well as planned future, uh, investments. There's a Cannery Public Market, the, uh, additional, uh, land purchased by the Midi. Uh, there's a potential affordable housing, uh, projects, uh, on the drawing board with the Buena Vista Choice Neighborhood Plan, and, uh, we'll also build upon the existing, uh, downtown area studies. In addition to the TURS, uh, you've authorized funding, and we're underway on the development of a new unified, uh, development code that will include a form-based code, uh, for the downtown area, so those are two tools that will work in tandem to attract private investment. As one, we create a regulatory framework that's predictable and provides individuals that are willing to invest capital in downtown, uh, Brownsville, a consistent regulatory environment, so that they know when they're coming to the table, they know what they're gonna get coming out of the permitting process. As well as the form-based code, that even goes further and beyond just a traditional, uh, zoning and subdivision regulation, this gets into, uh, architectural design and style, and if a private party comes to invest money, they want to make sure that they're buying into an overall master plan, very similar like you would find in old mall development, that you had a master developer, and he had control of design and signage and location of different types of businesses. The form-based code helps us, uh, create that predictability for, for private investment. The, uh, the project also fits the city commission's strategic pillars, the city of Brownsville's strategic pillars. Under economic development, uh, the TURS tool will help, uh, provide fiscal resources to deliver, uh, municipal services within the downtown area. It adds for the potential for job creation, not just, uh, primary jobs, but jobs after actual redevelopment takes place, not just construction jobs. Provides the opportunity to grow our sales tax within the TURS boundary and to, uh, create an environment for property taxes to rise, as well as attract businesses from outside as AC-stable, uh, and predictable investment opportunities. Under your planning and your zoning, uh, pillar, this complements an overall downtown strategy as, uh, creating a destination for arts, culture, uh, and nightlife. Uh, the TURS will work in tandem again with your form-based code and your land development code to encourage mixed-use and residential infill projects, and, uh, will complement a comprehensive strategy, housing strategy as well. So, I'm gonna go ahead and talk a little bit about the meeting the criteria for a TURS. This is statutory mandated criteria, uh, and, and the downtown area, uh, clearly meets the intent that the legislature, uh, set when they passed the TURS legislation. There's a substantial number of substandard or deteriorating structures within the boundary. Uh, there's inadequate sidewalks and a street layout, uh, although the grid we have is a fantastic street, street layout for redevelopment. Uh, there are some short blocks that a larger developer that wants to bring in perhaps a mixed-use development will need to combine multiple blocks to create the site that they would need. Uh, some faulty lot layouts, uh, unsanitary and unsafe conditions in certain parts of the proposed TURS boundary, and there's some deterioration of our infrastructure and site improvements throughout the boundary as well, that we'll be able to tackle with the TURS tool. Here's some, uh, examples of projects that could potentially be funded through, uh, a TURS project, uh, the, the Majestic Theater facade, uh, there's a similar situation that existed in city of Galveston, where they had a theater with a facade, uh, it was deteriorating, so the city had the private developer grant the city, uh, uh, facade easement in perpetuity in name, in the name of the public, so that facade for that community was, uh, of historic significance. They used, uh, hotel occupancy tax, as well as, uh, historic tax credits to bring back the facade and to permanently illuminate it as an easement to the building, so that the public was able to enjoy that. Uh, obviously, our alleys could, uh, uh, receive some upgrades through the TURS, whether that's drainage or pavement, or potentially, uh, burying utility lines. We recently had a redevelopment case where there was a conflict where the property owner needed to install, or desired to install a staircase, but there were some conflicts with some utilities, and, uh, and the access through the alley to, to the, uh, solid waste collection system, and so, with the TURS tools and funding, we might be able to address some of those, uh, potential land use conflicts in the future. Uh, another opportunity is for us to work with private, uh, property owners on facade improvements. You can see here that there's some deterioration in the two buildings, uh, we'd be able to use some TURS funds potentially for a facade program or sign enhancement program. And that, I'll turn it back over to Travis.
Great, thank you. As you see the boundary below, the TURS boundary would be all of the area within the red line. That's about four hundred and forty acres when you include roads and right-ofways. On the next slide, it'll show you less acreage when you look at parcels that are owned. There are over three hundred historic contributing structures in that zone, so sort of to the left, it's the UP Switchyard, I'll call it the historic downtown Brownsville, goes up to the Midi Cultural District. We picked up Twelfth Street, as well as the Buena Vista Neighborhood. So, that's the four hundred and forty acres that make up the core of the TURS. This map is difficult to read, it shows you the current land use within the TURS. One of the requirements is you can't have more than thirty percent of the area within the zone be residential, and this complies with that requirement under state law, excluding publicly-owned properties. The current twenty nineteen baseline taxable value of the zone is ninety-seven point three million dollars, it's about a thousand parcels, and it's three hundred and twenty-four acres of, of, of property that's within a parcel. Four hundred and forty when you pick up right-ofway and roads, three hundred and twenty-four parcels. You see there's residential, there's quite a bit of exempt property, that's primarily property owned by a public sector entity, religious organizations are also tax exempt. Does that make sense? So ninety-seven point three million dollars from those thousand parcels. You have a copy, I believe, in your packet of the preliminary, uh, project and finance plan that was created. What's contemplated in the ordinance is a thirty-year lifespan for the TURS, that's very typical, between twenty and thirty years. Seventy-five percent of Brownsville's, uh, incremental property tax revenue would be contributed. I assume the two-and-a-half percent inflation rate. I also assume for the thirty years, five hundred thousand dollars of new taxable construction or building activity takes place. I think that's very conservative. I just put that in here as a placeholder to illustrate the type of revenue that would be available. Assuming Cameron County also joined, there could be, you know, thirteen to fifteen million dollars available to reinvest in this zone. I think that number will be much higher, but again, using that conservative five hundred thousand dollars per year of new taxable value. To remind everybody, it's just real property, not personal property, uh, by state law. The next step, assuming you all approve the ordinance at second reading, is we would come back at the beginning of next year and create the final project and finance plan. So, that would dictate the types of projects that would be eligible for, uh, funding from the TURS. Some of those, uh, projects are typically gonna be parks, streetscapes, trails, infrastructure, economic development grants and loans. Many times, you can support different housing initiatives, whether it's affordable, market rate, mixed use, and then oftentimes, cities do recoup some of their administrative costs associated with administering the TURS.
So, but you can keep money back for buying land? That's where I don't, where you lose me.
I'm sorry, dear.
So, if, if I go and buy land within the, the TURS, then I can get reimbursed, basically? Um, what do you mean by land acquisition?
So, if the, if the... So if the city decided to go buy property, they could use some of the tax incremental revenue to go buy property. Not a private landowner, that's just an eligible expense. Let's say you want to assemble a block or you need to go buy property. You could use TERS revenue to pay for that.
And this doesn't change the amount of taxes that the property owner is actually paying? It just, it just changes where the taxes are going, right?
Correct. So if you collect $100 today, that $100 still goes to general fund. Any future revenue, 75% would go to the tax increment account. The other 25% would go to general fund. And so the process is a board of directors gets appointed. We work with them. They approve the final project and finance plan. It then has to come back to city commission for approval.
How quickly would the board need to be appointed?
No, I think per law, I think you have 90 days from the date that the ordinance is approved, but we would want to do it sooner.
By the early part of next year, we would need to get that board put in place. And then as we go to other taxing entities, they would get one person. So if the county joined, they could get a person added to the board.
Yeah, if we can do it next meeting, if it gets approved, then that'd be ideal. I think it might be an item for the next meeting.
I'm sorry, is there a way that we can implement that the board is comprised of people from certain areas that have knowledge of the issues at hand?
You could provide some restrictions. I think the way we have it established is we have one per district.
We have it right now as a six, a board of six members. And one, because we believe that the county would want to participate. We've asked them for their participation, that they would have another voting, a vote as an entity being included in the board so that we have seven. I think my thing would be to do an odd number. However, you all want to do the six and then have, if they join in, they would be the seventh. And so you would have seven board members, which is consistent with the board number that you all were looking into. That would be up to you.
It's up to you how you determine what people to appoint to the TERS.
Okay. Is that it, guys? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there any speakers on the side? Do we have anybody here to speak on the side? Yes, sir, come on up.
Can I approach the commissioners? I have a files for each one of them.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, sir, let us know your name. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Sam Manatt. I own most of the riverfront on the river. And in 2007, we were in the TRERS preliminary, the lines. And now we've been taken out of it. I started 23 years ago and I was the first person to develop that land on that river. And I still own the land. And I think that we should be included in the TRERS program. If you'll look, there's some studies that the city paid, and I'm sure they paid a lot of money. It was called Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three of the Hunter Hinters Group. And this goes back to 2001. And I can read, or I would like to ask the secretary to read into the record. There's eight paragraphs highlighted in yellow. If she would read that to everybody, I think she could probably read better than I could. There's only eight, it won't take that long. There's only eight small paragraphs.
What?
And what it states is that how important the riverfront is. And that's the catalytic point to start with for the revitalization of downtown Brownsville.
We'll do, we can accept the document. We can accept the document into the record as far, rather than reading it. I think that'd be the best. But we absolutely understand this, man.
Okay, that's fine. But she cannot read it? Because I'd like the public to understand.
Well, it's public comment, it's limited time.
But the whole record, all the documents will be part of the minutes of the meeting. It's going to be submitted into.
But I'd just like to make sure that everybody understands it's not just a certain group. The river, the riverfront is, has more history. That's where the Chisholm Trail starts. That's where the Old Port of Brownsville starts. It's in between the two international bridges. That could be the most important part of any of the downtown revitalization project. And I think everybody understands that. It's been given in reports since back in 2001. And there's other developers looking at it at the current time. And I'm sure y'all have seen all the documents and what it will generate. And I believe you understand that the riverfront will generate more money than probably the other. So my question is, why were we, the riverfront, and the other landowners excluded from this boundary?
Can someone please move back to the map that shows the area that's covered? So that I can see where his property is in relation to that? Thank you.
Mr. Manatt, did you have anything else? We can address your question. I, either I can or the deputy city manager can, but did you have anything else for us?
No, except that here, the map, y'all have a map that shows us that we were included. And I think part of the Mexico Boulevard was included too.
So your question is, why are you now excluded?
Yeah, why are we now excluded when it's one of the most important parts of the development of the city of revitalization of downtown Brownsville? Is it, are y'all mad at somebody else or am I being dissuaded?
No, not at all. You'll hear an explanation. I think there's, it's twofold. One of them, I think it may have existed as a TERS prior. I'm not sure what the status of that TERS was. I believe the commission did away with that TERS last year, if I'm not mistaken.
That was unamigable.
But, but I know Helen, our deputy city manager, can address that. But then second, what I can say is that the property referring to, there's other individuals that have been in discussions with the city on that. However, they're not ready to go on that. So we're moving forward with this, but I'll let her go ahead and.
We're the landowners.
Okay, but remember one thing.
And BP Newman, who's an attorney, they probably stand in response today. And they're one of the landowners that have vacant land.
One thing to keep in mind, though, is that those TERS boundaries can be expanded.
Right.
So once it's, once it's established, it can also be expanded.
Right, but couldn't it, why not just add the den now?
Well, that's what they're going to tell you right now.
But the intent, the intent would certainly be, Sam, to include that in a TERS at some point, but.
But.
We'll let her go ahead and respond to you.
I'll bet you money it doesn't happen.
We're not supposed to gamble.
But there's a different, it can be a different TERS. It doesn't have to be that TERS.
I know, I know, but we'll watch and see.
We're not. Helen, what do you have?
Thank you, Sam.
Yes, what we've submitted, what we've received is a concept plan. We have been working with the proposed TERS, the riverfront with Sam, Mr. Sam Morosco on that project. I would say that one TERS doesn't mutually exclude the other TERS. I think we're trying to hone out, hone in on certain pro forma financial implications of supporting that TERS, given the extensive infrastructure costs associated with the levy and other types of performance that they, that our financial advisor's been looking at. So we are in constant communications. Staff is still meeting with that developer. In fact, we have a meeting this week to speak about some of the financial questions that we've had and the infrastructure questions we have. So to the question this gentleman has posed is, you know, does one exclude the other? No, what we're saying is that we need a little bit more information. And we're trying to work with the developer, spending city staff resources, time, legal and financial to be able to answer those questions and do our definitional responsibility as staff to the commission saying, this is the project, these are the costs associated, and this is the expenditures, and this is what they, what they're proposing. I don't think anybody's saying that, that, I think what we're saying is we're still having to fine tune and ask those questions. And we're working with the developer to do that, get those answers to you so that we can present that to the city commission and the mayor.
What, Mr. Manatt did bring up a good point, Ms. Arminas, which is something we've talked about in the past, which is that he's the owner of the property that those discussions have, have taken place. So I think it would be prudent to include Mr. Manatt and the other property owners within that development on those conversations.
Absolutely, and we will do that. I'll make sure we get his information. I think we have his information and definitely have that conversation with him, as he does deserve that.
I want to ask a question too. So if there is another TERS that encompasses Mr. Manatt's property and the other area, if it's developed or passed and the developers aren't able to do their project, there is no risk to the city in dissolving the TERS if they don't comply with their development? Is that correct?
Right.
So there's no harm in doing another TERS?
Right, they can have a separate TERS. And that's, like I said, it's not mutually exclusive. One or the other cities have multiple TERS, TERSs, and they identify multiple boundaries. What I would say is that that project is wonderfully complex as well. And so that project has very large infrastructure costs associated with that large vision and initiative. So we would definitely want to hone in on that. But it's not exclusive. We can create another, there is no limit where we say cities are not allowed to.
So if there's one, if one of the obstacles to the developer is to be able to go to his other components of his development to say, yes, I got my TERS from the city of Brownsville. And if he can't pull through after that, there is no harm to the city for him not making it and us dissolving the TERS, right?
Well, but the actual property owners may still want it.
So we will speak to the property owners and any, we have been speaking to property owners, other property owners in the, in the area that is not being included and some that are. And I think most of them are, have been supportive of the boundary and location. And we've gotten, one thing that we haven't identified is that in, even in the brokers tour that we have recently had, where we took tour, brought commercial brokers and developers throughout the downtown, they were very interested in this approval process and very supportive. So I do want to say that, that we had about 70 developers and property owners there very interested in the TERS within the downtown boundary.
Thanks. Do we have another speaker? Yes, sir, yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Dennis Frankie. I am from South Padre Island. I have a home here in town. Have some other holdings here in Brownsville. I'm here to speak in favor of the, what do you call it? The tax incentive zone that you're proposing. I think it's a wonderful tool and I think that you can make things happen in areas where they never would happen with this vehicle. So I think it's, I think it's something that's very commendable that you're doing. I look at the map that you've made and you've got a tremendous amount of area within this zone. But you've got one huge mistake. And I think that you really should, before you pass it, rectify the mistake. You have a developer, let me say, I have no, I have no dog in this fight. I don't know anything. I saw this on the agenda and that's why I'm here. I know Sam Manatt, I know Sam Morosco. And they're both friends of mine. And I've been following Sam's project for, I don't know, six, eight, 10 years. He's been working on it more than 10 years. And it is the most substantial project that Brownsville downtown could see anytime in the future. I mean, this, in power, this zone that you're passing, you might get a few buildings, old buildings that are renovated. No big deal. But if you, if this project that Sam Morosco has been trying to promote for probably more than 10 years comes about, your whole downtown Brownsville could re, re, rejuvenate it. And you would bring the life back to town. I just drove through town right now. You look at it, it's pitiful. Downtown has got only one thing going on, it's traffic from across the bridge, and that's not great. There's no chance, other than the, other than the town square where the old Market Square was is being rehabilitated. But that's the only piece of anything downtown that's going to make any significance. The rest of it is segunda, second, second-hand this and giveaway this and whatever. It's just, I'm sorry, it's garbage. And your downtown is never going to be anything but that unless you do something significant. Now, Sam Morosco has done some other projects, very significant projects. One in San Diego. He's, he has all of the contacts. He has all of the ability. He's done work with Austin, he's worked with everybody. And he has guided Brownsville to the point that they could assist him and move forward and make this project happen. So the mistake that you're making right now is that you're not including on San Pearl Boulevard all the property to the river. It's no skin off your nose. All you do is redraw the map. It doesn't cost you a nickel. And you put this in, that property into the zone and it will allow Sam to go forward with his project with ease. He's not going to come, have to come back and say, gee, I'd like to create a little bit bigger piece of that zone. I'm a real estate developer. That's all I do. You either do it in the front end and get it done right, or it'll never happen. I'm telling you, it's hugely, hugely important that you, that you include this property. Now, maybe he'll never be able to build it, but maybe he will. And if he does, you're going to find something happen in Brownsville that none of you have dreamed about. Our market on South Padre Island is 100% tourism.
Mr. Frankie, you're out of time. Can you just wrap it up?
Say it again.
You're out of time, like a minute ago. Can you just wrap it up for us?
Okay, I'm going to go quick. Give me just, just a second more. My point is that Mattamorris in Brownsville used to be a huge sell for us on the island. People came to the island. They could go all the places on the island and fish and do whatever they wanted to do. But they'd go to Mattamorris or Brownsville once during their tour. They don't come to Brownsville anymore. We don't even have it on the list. Only thing we have on the list in Brownsville is the zoo. I mean, come on, if this project came in, you could recreate that magnetism that would do something for you here in Brownsville. It would do something for us on the island because it'd give us another place to say, you can go into town, you can go see the Espinade, it's fantastic. You can look all of Mattamorris from there. I thank you for your time. I hope your consideration. I have nothing to do with either of these. I know the two Sams, but that's all. I just saw it on the agenda and I thought I should share that with you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here on the side?
My name is Mark Yates. I work for Cameron County. I represent the Cameron County Housing Finance Corporation. We're working, the corporation is a subset of the county. We have a board that runs it. It's Sergio Gonzalez at.
Lone Star.
Bank, Lone Star Bank. I apologize, he's there and he couldn't be here. We try to promote mixed income housing, trying to improve the housing stock in Cameron County. Brownsville's a good portion of that. We're looking at three different properties. One of them's on Price Road. One of them is within your current TERS in downtown. And the third is just on the edge of your TERS. It's at 901 Fillmore. Your, it's called Rusaka Elementary. It was decommissioned by the school district last year. 200 kids were there this last year. And we're looking to turn that into a multifamily senior citizen facility. But to do that, we're going to need to make a 9% low-income housing tax credit application. Our 901 Fillmore Street is just on the border of your TERS. And if you add a little bit of appendage there on H Street and move over to 9th Street, then it makes our application almost bulletproof. It makes it really likely that we'll get a good chance of being awarded by Texas Department Housing and Community Affairs, DDHCA. If the 9% is awarded to that project, there's a good chance that the company we're working with will develop that property. There's still some challenges associated with it. The poverty level in that area is far below what is recommended. And so we're going to have to request a waiver. But what we are requesting is a, an amendment to your boundary to include the Rusaka Elementary School, School Building, the elementary. And the company that we're working with likes to take historic buildings and recreate them, build around them, and improve them. So that's what we're looking to offer City Brownsville in that area. So we're requesting to be, to add the 901 Rusaka Elementary to that location.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I ask him a question? Did you, had you already approached the city about this?
No, we haven't. We just, the Cameron County Housing Finance Corporation just received information from the company in that these are the sites that they'd like to make an application. As soon as they finalize their plan, then I'll approach the city on that issue. But there's two other sites, one downtown and then on Price Road.
If the commission is inclined to entertain this request, it doesn't upset the percentage requirements that the state sets because it's publicly owned property now. And if they enter into a joint venture with a private partner, they'll still be able to amend the map prior to the second reading if that's the commission's desire.
Is it contiguous to that little head that sticks out?
Yeah. It's, I don't know if it's contiguous, but it's really in close proximity.
And would we have to get BISD's consent to have that property?
The company's approaching the school district right now and making them an offer.
That one makes sense to me.
But it will be an offer contingent upon an award of a 9% tax credit. So I imagine the offer is an option right at this point. But thank you very much for the audience.
Thank you. Anybody else here on this item?
Come forward.
Just tell us your name, please.
Yes. My name is Oscar Cescu, and I'm here representing one of the property owners of Mexico Boulevard, Mr. Mike Belville. And he also has, you know, several plans in place for that, for that whole area. He does own a pretty good amount of the property on Mexico Boulevard. And there's some plans on, you know, maybe doing like a, kind of like a small business mall, you know, in one of the warehouses that he has out there. And I know that it would really help, you know, mom and pop, you know, little small businesses to kind of get jump started. And he just wants, you know, to be considered, you know, and maybe if there was an expansion or if those other TERS were going to remain in place, just to be considered for that. So, yeah, that would be all. Thank you for.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I give you thanks for giving me an opportunity to express my deep feelings to you.
Please state your name.
Mr. Genovee Isaguirre, Dr. Genovee Isaguirre, Bishop Isaguirre. Regarding these projects, they are being considered for the benefit of our city, families, and the generations to come into the future. I'm Dr. Isaguirre Rivera, Bishop and founder of the Christian Association of Churches, Misión Divina here in Brownsville, and in more than 10 countries all over the world. As a citizen of Brownsville for more than 60 years, 60 years, I face a place where my sons, grandchildren, my Isaguirre family has lived in happiness. I believe in our country. The country and the city of Brownsville are in a critical moment in history. And all the decisions that we make will have a very blessed impact, or the rest of the valley will continue to grow in all aspects, especially finance-wise, and we will continue to be in the same ones. With all my heart, I wish that the projects that these administrators do, talking about this, because we're owners of the next property of Mr. Manat, we want to be included in this. It's very important for, probably more important than anything else, because we're talking about souls, not money. We want for you to take into consideration our property located in San Pablo Boulevard, a church that has been blessed, that has blessed thousands and thousands of citizens for more than 34 years, that we are willing to put everything on the line for the benefit of our beloved city. I wish that all of these advances positively, and that real advances may be done so that all the city will be blessed. Our association is about to start international conferences where many from many different countries will visit us. I believe that the renovation of the infrastructure of this city downtown will impact everyone, and the flow of tourism will be great. I'm very grateful for your attention, and I believe that my grandchildren in the future will enjoy the growth of our beloved city with a decision that we all decide to do positively this day. And so that we don't go another 20 or 40 years more. It's a second-class city. In Brownsville, I'm about to finish. Give me, give me an hour. I'm a preacher. I'm going to finish. In Brownsville, we are, we're successful people. This is a city where many celebrities and generals and men of God have impacted the nations and the world. And with the help of God, we will be proudful. We will have a proudful growth. I bless you and our city in the name of Jesus, and I decree that any curse on the city will be broken right now in the name of Jesus. And we will continue being a special city and have a happy Merry Christmas, all of you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
May the Lord bless you.
Thank you.
Bless you.
May I ask Travis a question?
Yeah.
If somebody wants to expand the TERS area, if the TERS is established and the TERS Board is established, is that who makes the decision to expand the TERS, or does the commission?
It's the commission that makes the determination to expand or shrink the boundary or terminate it early.
Change the dimensions. And does it, does a request to the commission, does it have to come from the TERS Board, or can it come from a citizen?
It can come from a citizen to ask you to extend it.
Anybody else here on this item?
Sandra Duran, citizen of Brownsville. Mayor and Commissioners, for some reason, I was invited to do a tour with Mr. Manat. I had never met the man before. All I can tell you is that the vision of the two historical bridges, the B&amp;M and the Gateway Bridge, is impressive from where I was shown yesterday. And for whatever it's worth, I know that the cost to develop anything out there would be tremendous. It was, it would be two, very large amount of money. But I'm telling you, the vision of seeing those two bridges from where I was shown yesterday was impressive, for whatever it's worth. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any motions on the item?
Motion to approve with the addition of the Rusaka Elementary location.
901, 901 Fillmore, I think?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt the TERS with the inclusion of that property. And a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor. Before the next item, we have a presenter during executive session who has a flight to catch and requested if we could move his item up, he would be under item A.
I don't have any issues with that. Anybody have any concerns?
No. Motion to take it out of order.
Okay. We have a motion to take it out of order and go to executive session. And a second, any discussion?
Let me just read the agenda item.
And, yes. And then for the record, I will abstain from discussion on that item, right, as I have a.
Actually, yours is item D. This is item A. So you can participate in this.
Oh, my bad. Thank you. Executive session, item A pursuant to Section 551.071, consultation with attorney in Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property on a matter which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, and to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property because such deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, to wit, the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property for development and redevelopment purposes and the formation, dissolution, governance, operations, and structure of existing or future economic development entities, corporations, and districts.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion on going into executive session on this item? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, recess.
We will go ahead and continue back with items for individual consideration. We have action item number three, consideration and action to approve the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation GIBIC bylaws.
Somebody presenting on this?
I mean, well, do we need any? I think we've already, I'd like to move that we approve those bylaws without the inclusion of 4.023, which prohibits membership by a commissioner.
And I would, yeah, I'd go with that, but to add that, it can be limited to one city commissioner sitting on that board, right?
That, I'll accept that amendment.
But in which case, I think then we need to remove also Section 6.02.
What's Section 6.02?
It's, uh, ex parte, or ex officio, sorry. It then puts, I think that whoever.
6.02 has to do with checks and drafts.
But there's two, the old bylaws are there and then there's new.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll get the old ones. Apologies.
Ex officio members, because then if it says.
So basically, by doing that, then you'd want to stop the city manager or mayor from being able to attend and not voting? They're not voting anyway.
Well, no, I just don't want, if you have a city commissioner on there, I don't want them to not have voting rights.
To not have what?
To not have voting rights.
This.
In other words, eliminate 602 and 402 so that you can have at least one commissioner with voting.
But 602 has nothing to do with voting by commissioners. It just has to do with city manager and mayor attending.
So if you take out 602, then you can only just attend and not vote?
Say that again.
If you leave 602 and 4.023, then you can only attend. You can't vote.
As mayor or city manager.
If you're the mayor and city manager, but not if you're the commissioner.
The mayor or his designee.
Right.
I guess I just want the clarification that a city commissioner would not be like the mayor's designee, or, you know, or, as long as a city commissioner, we can limit it to one city commissioner with voting rights. That's really what we're going for, right?
What's the motion?
Okay, so the motion is to leave out 4.023 and to limit to only one city commissioner on the board with full voting right.
No more than one, is what you mean, right?
Only, only one.
Not that it has to be one, but that no more than one.
Well, no more than one. But, yes, no more than.
Not a requirement.
It's not a requirement, is what I'm saying.
Okay. So.
Do you have a second?
Yes, I'll second you.
You're talking about 4.02 only, right?
4.02 only, three. It's 4.023.
Yes. Okay. All right. We have a motion.
Wait, sorry, can I ask, oh, for another one. I would need clarification from Mr. Dickos. In Section 4.12, where it says, board's relationship with administrative departments of the city. It says that then, the city and corporation shall annually determine the need for a services contract to account for regular services provided to the corporation and city. So as far as I know, the finance department for the city has always done finances for GIBIC. Does that mean that now we have to have, or a contract in place then about services rendered between the city and?
Well, I think there's currently a contract already. So you could modify that as well, but there is a contract, yes.
There is. Okay. And then, wait, hold on. There was another question that I had. Oh, since we're talking about amendments, in Section 4.07 about attendance, it's asking that any members of the board attend, if you have three consecutive absences, or you have less than 75% meetings attended, then basically you're up for removal. But it says, in the event replacement is indicated, the member will be counseled by the president, and subsequently, the president will submit in writing to the city secretary. I, so basically, then does that mean to you, Mr. Dickos, that only if the, if, that you have, that the president or the chairman of GIBIC has to go and tell the person, sorry, but you're missing, now I'm going to refer you to the city commission for your removal, or do you think that's optional?
It's not optional. I think it's mandatory. If somebody, if I remember correctly, I'm going off memory, because I don't have the document in front of me, it says that if you are missing three days, three unexcused absences in a row, it's automatically counted as you stepping down from the board. And that creates a situation where then the director will contact the city secretary, ask him for the board to appoint a new member.
And if it's just, you have less than 75% attendance rate?
Then I believe you're not able to reapply for the position. And I believe, and again, I'm going off memory, that at the end of the year, I think it's calculated on a yearly basis, and then at that point, you're not eligible to be a member again. But I can review that and get back to you on that.
Well, because.
Because that, remember, the board policy that I just sent to you yesterday, that has language that may contradict the bylaws. And the way that the policy was approved by the city commission is that it trumps the GIBIC bylaws. So what I'm trying to say is, you all created a general standardized attendance record and eligibility procedure under the policy that may not coincide with what you're voting on here today in the GIBIC. But that just means that the policy actually trumps this. And I'd be more than happy to look into that, just to be sure.
Well, my only issue is, if you're in year one of a four-year term, and you've only made 60% of the meetings, does that mean that we have to wait until the end of your four years, or until you miss three meetings, until, where we can just, where you vacate this?
407, and I was just seeing it, and I was right, it is a 12-month period where you get to see what your percentage attendance is. And if it's below 75%, then it's automatic forfeiture. That allows the director to contact management for asking for a new appointee.
Then, then I'll renew my second to your.
So then, that would be 4.02 will say that not more than one city commissioner will be allowed on the board.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? My personal opinion, I don't think commissioners should serve, but that's just my opinion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I'm in opposition. Okay, so motion passes with that amendment.
Action item number four, consideration and action to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Brownsville, Texas and the Loa Rio Grande Valley Development Council, Valley Metro, regarding implementation of a regional bike share program.
Mayor and city commissioners, as you know, a couple of years ago, we had a bike share system in Brownsville, pretty well-used. That was done under a partnership with the university at the time. This is now, the LRGVDC has taken the lead on creating a standard bike share program throughout the valley. So if you buy a membership here in Brownsville, you can go to McAllen or Harlingen or wherever there is a spot, and also use it there. And so it was pretty genius, I think, so that that way, different cities didn't have different bike share providers. And so the item before you is to execute an interlocal with the LRGVDC. This is a cost of $36,000, one-time cost, $36,000 for four stations. That includes all maintenance and everything else that goes with the operation of the system. If we want to add more or get more sponsorships for stations or any of that kind of stuff, the agreement is written where we would just, we would just go to LRGVDC and say, hey, we want another station. That cost is $9,000 under the agreement. So, but this agreement is four stations. We would have to amend it to include other stations.
And who would maintain it? Who would maintain the stations?
The LRGVDC has a bike-ped coordinator, and they have, they're in charge of all meetings.
Okay. Do you have any motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Action item number five, consideration and action to approve a memorandum of understanding for the market square rehabilitation between the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Historical Association.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, I'm Elizabeth Walker in the office of the city manager. What we've presented before you this evening. What we've presented before you this evening is a memorandum of understanding to formalize what is already indicated in the lease instrument with the Brownsville Historical Association for the use and occupancy of Market Square. The 99-year lease indicates that the city is responsible for infrastructure improvements and explicitly states HVAC systems. So in our partnership through this MOU, the Brownsville Historical Association would undertake replacing the HVAC systems at Market Square this year in two phases, a little less than $60,000 each phase. We would reimburse them those direct costs when billed.
That work hasn't started yet?
No, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And like how it's three hours in and we're on item five.
Action item number six.
Item six now.
Oh, six, my bad.
Consideration and action on an interlocal between City of Brownsville and Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority for the development of the West Rail Corridor.
Mayor and city commissioner, around June, I want to say June, May, we executed an MOU, a memorandum of agreement with the Cameron County for the development of, and the future of the West Rail Corridor. And so we, there was in that MOU, it was written where any cost, there would be a cost share between the county and the city on the project. And so the CCRMA is the project lead, they are going, they are starting their environmental phase, but they did approach us about a $125,000 contribution towards the design phase. That will probably end up expediting the design phase by a year, or maybe even more with this contribution, so we ask for your approval tonight. The contribution is $125,000, the county has already approved this contribution, and they're half of the contribution, and so we ask for your approval tonight.
And this will start in January?
The design, it is my understanding, will start in January for our discussions with Pizza Puppa.
Where are we getting the money from?
It's in, it's in the bike-ped fund.
The what?
Bicycle and pedestrian funding that we have.
There's money in there?
There is money to cover this, and the bike share program, the item, two items ago.
Okay, do you have any motions?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Action item number seven, consideration and action to acknowledge the finance director's financial statements and cash investment reports for the City of Brownsville for fiscal year ended September 30th, 2019.
Good evening, our mayor and city commissioners. I'll be brief on this information for the report. This is the unofficial unauthorized financial statements for the period ended September 30th, 2019. Some of the financial highlights, you have unassigned fund balance in the general reflects a $1.1 million increase from last year due to higher-than-expected revenues budgeted and lower anticipated expenditures. Sales taxes are above last year's numbers by 5.9%, or $1.6 million. 3.7, or 1,077,000 above budget projections. PUB cash transfer increased last year's in amount of 502,000, and about 1.8 million above adopted budget. Utility expenditures are 1% lower than same period as last year. This is important, because any reductions on utilities, we get a greater transfer in the PUB transfer. Current hotel motel receipts are 5.2 greater than last year, or 81,000 higher than same year, same as last year. Unemployment rate continues to drop, for the unemployment rate for September 2019 is 5.6%. Building permits values increased 3.7% from last year. Veterans Bridge, we have not gotten the final report for the ending September 30th. That information, we don't get it towards maybe early the year. So through August, we have about 20.4% increase above prior year, or 4.7 above project, projected budget. Empowerment Medical Fund, estimated fund balance about 988,000. This is only 6.5% of fiscal year 2019 expenditures. Tax levy there is, we had a slight decrease in collections, not material amounts, about 16 basis points. I'll go over some of these presentations. Revenue over expenditures, on revenues, budget is on green, actuals on blue. We have 113 million in revenues compared to budget of 111 million. Expenditures of, we had 115 budget, we only spent 109 million. Fund balance, you see the trend, fund balance from fiscal year over year, it's increased. The items in gray is the unassigned fund balance, that's the one indicating it's a 1.1 million increase from 2018. Sales tax revenues, year over year, except for 2017, where we actually had a decrease in sales tax as incrementally increased. Veterans Bridge cash payments, again, from fiscal year 2014 to 2019, again, the transfer has incrementally increased over period of years. 2019 actuals is about 3.2. This is based on estimates through September 30th, actual numbers will change based on the final report we get from the county. And this is a history of PUB cash transfer utilities. You see, the transfers from PUB has increased from fiscal year 2015 to 2019, which is about 11.5 million dollars. That concludes the presentation, do you have any questions?
No. Do you need any action on this?
Just to acknowledge.
Okay.
Motion to acknowledge?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Mayor, I would move that we take item 19 out of order, because there were people that were here for public comment, who are still waiting, and we're three and a half hours in.
I'm fine with that. Does anybody have any issues on that?
So I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so this next item is something that I am very proud to have worked closely with Mayor Trey Martinez, and, Trey Martinez, Trey Mendez, I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm so sorry about that.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Our mayor, Trey Mendez. I need coffee, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. So this next item is something that I am very proud to have worked with, our mayor, Trey Mendez, and there are some amazing advocates here in the community. Joe, you want to stand so we can acknowledge you? And Albert, too, if you could please stand?
I guess I'll link public comment.
May I please read the agenda item first, please? Consideration and action to create LGBTQ task force.
Hi, good evening, mayor, commissioners. Thank you for motioning to move this forward, or up in the agenda. So just want to read off some comments. In June 2017, the City of Brownsville Commission proclaimed June Pride Month LGBTQ Pride Month in Brownsville, a historical first in the Rio Grande Valley, giving visibility to a deeply marginalized community and also deeply machista community. In 2019, this year, thanks to Main Street, Carota Petrina, Planned Parenthood, HEB, and local businesses, Brownsville hosted its first Pride Month in its history at Market Square, almost 400 people showed up. As we celebrate the good, we must recognize the bad. Kimberly Avila, a trans woman in our community, went missing from the downtown Brownsville area in 2017, to this day, she is still missing. Just a couple of months ago, Albert was harassed with homophobic slurs, Texas Roadhouse here in Brownsville. Ultimately, Brownsville Police Department could do nothing because there are no laws that protect LGBTQ people locally. Underlying this, too, is the way HIV disproportionately impacts gay and bisexual Latino men and Latina trans women. If the trends continue, the CDC says one in four of us will acquire the virus in our lifetime. I ask you to vote yes in favor of the task force to help bring our community to the table to begin addressing homophobia, discrimination, and other concerns impacting citizens that should require the involvement of the city to help advise on policy and work that supports the needs of an increasingly visible community.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adalbertino Jose. So, yes, I had that incident regarding what had happened to me, and that also opened my eyes, because a lot of people have reached out to me to have to have a voice, because I was used to just being numb to situations like that. But after seeing my nephews and my nieces and my family regarding to what happened, I have to stand up, and so we can put a stop to it, so we can be respected as well. And so we just hope you can vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, do you have a few words?
Anyone else on this side? Anybody else plan to speak? Come on up. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, commissioners, thank you. My name is Juan Trevino, and I'm a resident of District 4 here in Brownsville. So this June, I had the privilege of being able to attend Brownsville's first Market Square Pride. Before then, most people knew I was supportive of the LGBTQ plus community, but only a few close friends and relatives knew I was actually a part of that community. I'd keep my posts vague, make a statement every now and then, just that hinted at this or that, or express myself through artwork just enough so that those who knew, the true me knew what was going on with me. That day, that day, however, I asked a friend to attach one of the many large pride flags at the event to the back of my chair, found a clearing, and took off at full speed against the wind. Having that flag waving behind me was one of the best and most exciting experiences of my life, and I'm grateful that I was able to feel comfortable enough, safe enough, to express myself openly that day. Unfortunately, there are others who do not have that kind of privilege. There are others whose lives may literally depend on how well and how long they can keep themselves hidden, because they may live in an environment that is ignorant, unaccepting, or outright hostile toward people of their gender identity or sexual orientation. They may live with a constant fear of being harassed, discriminated against, or even harmed by people who don't agree with their existence. They are not safe. Today, I'm asking you all to vote yes on this task force. The creation of this task force would work to help to ensure protections for LGBTQ plus individuals so that they can feel as safe as everyone else does in the previously mentioned situations. They wouldn't need to worry about having their struggles dismissed by people who look at them with malice, or their concerns mishandled by people who would like to help but just don't know how. I look forward to seeing and being involved in a Brownsville that is more aware and accepting of its marginalized communities, a Brownsville that is looking to learn and help as best as they can. Supporting the creation of this task force would be a step in that direction. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rory Eggleston, and I am not a longtime resident of Brownsville. I'm a graduate student at UTRGV, I moved here in 2017. I'm a trans woman, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm very lucky. I have had no negative experiences, no experiences of overt discrimination since moving to Brownsville. But I, I've had frankly awful experiences elsewhere in the RGV, but thankfully not in Brownsville where I currently reside. But I'm not, I, there are others who are not so lucky. As Joe mentioned, Kimberly Avila, a trans woman of color, has been missing since 2017 as well. We have no idea where she is, and there are no leads as of the current time, and as Albert's example dictates, there have been plenty of people who have experienced homophobia and transphobia in Brownsville, and this is a, I would like for everyone in Brownsville to be able to experience the positivity that I have had, the experience that I have had, and not have to deal with the pain and trauma and suffering that others who have not been so lucky have had to deal with. So I encourage you to vote yes on this action item.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Logan, Logan Gowen, that's my mom. I didn't think I was going to have time to write this, but then this meeting went so long, so here I am.
Ouch.
You guys get an intern's award, good job. So...
Thanks, mom.
Yeah. It's been hard for me to write this statement, in one way for the same reason it's been hard for me to move back to Brownsville recently. This place personally and on average has been a really terrible place to grow up and live as a queer person. There's been no place for somebody of my differences in similar ways in earlier days, and sometimes even still today, there's not a seat at the table for people who are black or of color, other color, or women, and et cetera. I personally have been harassed physically and verbally while living here. I have lost jobs because of my identity, and once long ago, I even lost the will to live. So I want to try to make sure that this doesn't happen to other people, and that's why I'm here today. This is really the gay agenda. It's for equality, it's really scary, I know. So voting to establish the task force is a meaningful way to start working towards more, a more equal reality. The task force can work to identify and find language to protect LGBTQ people from discrimination on a municipal level. As you may or may not be aware, LGBTQ individuals have no protections under federal, state, and county levels, which means we can be fired or lose our homes for our innate characteristics, or merely being perceived by those characteristics. So I ask that this body turn the tide of history and work to make a better future for all citizens. Thanks.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Cordero, y voy a hablar en representación de mi misma. Soy madre de una persona transgénero, y ahorita él tiene 29 años, es una persona completa, es una persona que sabe respetar. Recuerdo 15 años atrás cuando confió su identidad conmigo, mi primera reacción fue de amor y de comprensión y de respeto, de aceptación, pero inmediatamente pensé en todo, lo que vendría después, ¿verdad? Todo lo vulnerable que él estaría en esta comunidad, en los lugares públicos, entonces sé que la ciudad de Brownsville en el 2012 adoptó una política de protección y no discriminación en contra de sus empleados. Esa protección se debe extender al resto de la comunidad, ¿verdad? Y sobre todo para que ninguna persona sea vulnerable a abusos, a burlas, a ser llamado por nombres, ni Albert, ni mi hijo, ni nadie en nuestra comunidad debería de estar vulnerable a estos abusos y a esta discriminación, a esta segregación. Entonces estamos pidiendo este, su voto, ¿verdad?, a favor del asunto número 19, ya que esto invitaría a todos a ser inclusivos, a ser, a respetar a los demás, y también daría pie a que las personas sean quien son y que no se avergüencen de ser quien son en los lugares públicos, a terminar la discriminación en los lugares de empleo y a ser más inclusivos. Entonces pedimos de su voto a favor de algo que va a ayudar a la inclusividad aquí en nuestra ciudad. Gracias.
Gracias.
Good evening, commissioners, mayor, Pedro Coronado. I'm here representing the Texas HIV Syndicate. The Texas HIV Syndicate is a group of over 100 individuals from throughout the state of Texas that have come together to create a plan to end the HIV epidemic. We have an epidemic. I think Joe made it very clear that eventually one in four of us will become HIV positive in our lifetime, that those are extreme numbers. Community, social justice, empowerment, integration, advocacy, and equity, those are the core guiding principles that the Texas HIV Syndicate uses, and they're achieving together plan, the Texasized Plan built by the community for the community. The LGBTQ task force will be able to push this agenda that we have as the Texas HIV Syndicate, the agenda that they have, to use these guiding principles that I just mentioned, and I see no better group of people to be able to do this. When we talk about healthcare, you know, Zika, when Zika broke out, everybody was running wild and crazy, and what's going to happen and everything, right? The opioid crisis, which is a crisis that is not really hitting us here as hard as other communities, but this is something that is hitting us hard here in the Rio Grande Valley. I think the LGBTQ task force in Brownsville is going to lead the way. I think Brownsville is leading the way in South Texas. McAllen is not doing this, Harlingen is not doing this, all of the other towns are not doing this. I think all the other cities need to look to Brownsville to see the strides that you guys are making, and I think you guys are setting a great example for the entire Rio Grande Valley. When I go back to Austin in the spring, I'm going to be able to say, yes, they voted yes for this task force, just the way that Houston has one, Dallas has one. for this task force, just the way that Houston has one, Dallas has one, Austin has one, South Texas and Brownsville, they have one too. And I think this is gonna be historic moment, and it's really up to you all, and I really don't see why anybody would vote no. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Juan Villala. As an educator, you observe a lot of growth in a student's education, but you also see a lot of growth in their lives. In my class, students know that there's a routine. They go inside, they get their do now, we do a guided practice, independent practice, and finally an exit ticket. You guys should see how happy they are when they pass their exit ticket and they put a gold star on their tracker every day. However, as soon as they enter my classroom, they also see a Safe Space LGBT logo. They see pride flags and no bullying tolerant signs. Why do I do this? I have witnessed bullying against LGBTQ people at school and out on the road to this day. Imagine this: going to a school and being called homophobic comments, then coming home to listen to "eres una mujer", "actúa como hombre", or having dinner at a restaurant where the staff are creating an unwelcoming environment. My students have expressed they feel welcome, safe, and most importantly, heard. The city of Brownsville should also feel the same way, being welcomed with open arms, safe and walking anywhere, and most importantly, acknowledged and respected and loved. I think it's so beautiful when a student tells you, you know, you really care about me, but it's really sad when they tell you, my mom kicked me out because I'm gay. It's really traumatizing for a 12-year-old to hear that. And so this is why I ask you all to vote yes on Agenda Item 19 for a brighter and progressive Brownsville. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vicente Martinez. I am from District One. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I'm a proud queer man. Two years ago, I couldn't say that out loud. I am not out to my family, so I might be outed due to my statements right now, but honestly, if the task force approves, I wouldn't mind it. Lo que se ve no se pregunta, es something a friend would say to me. Even though I was not out, I would hear relentless homophobic jokes, slurs, and bullying because of the way I was and how I was. Throughout my life, I see how people were treated for being part of the LGBT community, and I was terrified. I tried to dim my light and try not to make other people uncomfortable, so I created this story in my head that I was just, it was just a face, and I controlled everything about how I carried myself. I tried not to be seen, not heard. I tried to make sure people wouldn't think I was gay. Two months ago, I ran into a friend of mine from middle school. He told me, "You seem different. You seem outgoing and happy." I didn't give much thought to it, but then I remembered how it was, how scared I was to be me and not to be loved. I was ashamed. I'm gonna tell you a brief story that happened to me. My friend and I were at a local restaurant downtown about two, a year or so ago. We were sitting at a bar while we were waiting for our food. We were having a good time. I was scrolling through Instagram and I saw a funny meme. Meme is something that you see on social media, usually like if there's some funny to it.
Okay, bro. We're not that old.
Just making sure. And the meme stated, "Gay people rely on straight people to produce more gay people." I thought it was funny, and so did my friend. When our bartender heard us laugh, he asked us, "Why were we laughing?" So I showed him the meme. Once I showed him the meme, his demeanor changed, his characters, like his character changed to us. And I asked him, "Why did he make that face?" He made a nasty face. He told me, "I love gay people. Some of my best friends are gay, but I don't think they deserve the same rights as straight people do." I was thrown off by this comment. I had finally accepted my sexuality, and that comment made me shut off completely. I am a 6'1" guy who's over 300 pounds. I felt powerless. I felt sick to my stomach. I hadn't felt like this for years. As many of you know, as people have stated before me, it's legal in the state of Texas and other various states to fire someone for being part of the LGBT community. Conversion therapy is also legal in 18 states. Before I graduated, I was scared. I graduated about two years ago, and it was the day before my, the day of my last final. I was talking to my friend, and we're having this conversation, and we were just talking, and I was telling her how my cousin was outed and how it was a horrible story that she, that she entered. And I just kept repeating, "Gay is okay. Gay is okay." And at the age of 21, I'm 23, I was crying. We were both crying because we hear stories over and over again of how people get kicked out of their homes for being gay, all of horrible slurs. But I'm extremely lucky. I was scared after I graduated because I knew it was, they can fire me for being gay. I have no control for who I love. I'm extremely lucky to work for an organization that allows me to be myself and to embrace myself without living in fear of being fired. I don't want anyone to feel the way I felt. I don't want anyone to pick and choose who they are and who they love. I want them to be free, to accept and love themselves because I didn't for most of my life. 23-year-old me can deal with homophobic slurs, but 18-year-old me couldn't. I've grown thick skin. This is something that's going to save lives. The task force is going to save lives. Kids are going to be aware that it's okay to be part of the LGBT community and to know that their city accepts and cares for them. Please vote yes on the LGBT task force. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question, though. How's it gonna work? Do we appoint people or who's, or how's it gonna work? Or what are the parameters?
That's up to the commission. There isn't a lot of definition to the board appointments. It can be commission-led, it can be one commissioner appoints somebody. We can follow the same criteria for our board and committees that we have. I think the point was to see if there was interest in the task force initially, that we could work on the details, bring back those appointments potentially next meeting, work the logistics out. I think really it's just you all having the awareness that this is a request that we received, and if you're interested, we'll bring back all those, all those next steps.
Because I just would like to ensure that there's representation of all sides of this sexuality spectrum.
Right, right. And that, what I would also say is we would like to work with some of the same members who have requested this item to work on those, on that equity and representation on the board. We also want to work with them on the deliverables, right? What's gonna be the life of the task force? What is it that they want to report back to the commission? I received an email from Mr. Uvayas, who had a very detailed breakdown of the variety of things that we should be looking at as a city. So I think they'll do the heavy lifting for us. All we need to do is give them the blessing, and we could work with them on defining the scope of work and all that.
So I will gladly like to make the motion. Does anybody else have anything to say?
Is there any other speakers? Christina there.
Hello, my name is Christina Patino-Hool, and I represent Las Amahnestas. And we are especially excited about the LGBTQ task force. We have been collaborating with LGBTQ communities specifically on our project, "Hacemos la Ciudad", which is a project to imagine a more equitable and just future for the city. Those two priorities are core priorities for Las Amahnestas, and it was really important for us to involve the LGBTQ community in envisioning what equity looks like, because we know that until the most marginalized members of our community are safe and they feel like they can move through the community, then no one is safe. No one has justice here. We are especially excited, or we were especially excited during "Hacemos la Ciudad" when we imagined what it would look like to embody a more just, equitable future for the city. And one of the visions that Joe Colon-Uvayas brought to the table in collaboration with many of the other people here today and who also prioritize this as an issue, was this precise task force. We saw the vision of this task force unfold and performed in our city, and it was beautiful. We had a number of different people come out and support what it would look like for these, these ideas to be embodied in our city, and there is support for it here. It was amazing to see this vision placed into the streets of Brownsville, and I highly encourage the commission to pass this task force for today.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I mean, when, when, this was brought to, as Joe brought this to my attention, then I got Commissioner Tetro involved, and Noel and I had a meeting, it's probably been a few months now. And the whole entire purpose of that meeting was to get educated, learn more about the issues. Certainly, I was educated on a lot of the things I didn't know, and I think for, I mean, really the bottom line is just that we want Brownsville to be a community that is inclusive, that doesn't have a place for harassment of anybody, and we want everybody else to know that. And you should, you love who you love, that's just the way it is, regardless of who that is. And I think that all the citizens of Brownsville should be free to be who they are in our city without any fear of retaliation, getting fired, or being harassed, or arrested, or anything else. So that's kind of the purpose behind this, and hopefully we can get this done and start getting to work on how we can do a better job on this whole entire issue.
So with that said, I will gladly like to make the motion to approve the task force.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. So then, okay, go ahead. Next step then is gonna just be, how many members bring that to the next commission meeting, get it started, getting, you know, get everybody appointed, and then we'll start moving forward. Thank you, everybody who's been here and spoken on this. Really appreciate all your time and effort, and we're gonna get this done. Thanks.
Let's hope they use your soundbite instead of mine, calling you the wrong name.
Let's hope.
Action item number nine, consideration and action, an ordinance number 2019-6066, an ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of approximately $9,850,000 in aggregate, aggregate principal amount of the City of Brownsville, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2019A and approximately $3,550,000 in aggregate principal amount of the City of Brownsville, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Taxable Series 2019B, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad valorem tax and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent register agreement, a purchase contract, two escrow agreements, an official statement, and all instruments and procedures related thereto.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm gonna introduce Mr. Tom Spurgeon, our bond counsel with McCall, Parker, and Horton to go over this item.
Okay, great, great. Mayor, Commissioner, I'm Tom Spurgeon. I'm with McCall, Parker, and Horton. We've been your bond counsel for many years. In fact, I've been actually serving this city for about 30 years or so, so I'm delighted to be back. I'm pinch hitting for Noe. This is part, this is really his part of this program. He had to leave, he had a flight and those type of things, so I'm gonna pinch hit. I won't be as good as Noe, but I think I'm gonna try to hit the highlights that he wanted to mention. What I'm gonna talk about actually is gonna take both this item number and then item number, I guess, eight, in connection with the, one's a certificate obligation issue and the other's for the Geo Refunding Bonds. On October 1st, I believe, was Noe came and presented a plan of finance to the City Commission to do really two things: to issue a series of certificates of obligation, to raise about $6.7 million, to fund street sidewalk drainage improvements, to finance vehicles for the fire department, and to provide some funds for, to satisfy, there's provision in your mutification code, that using proceeds for certain mutification projects under the mutification committee. So that, those are the three purposes for the COs. And then the refunding issues were enacted or were presented for the purpose of refunding and achieving some savings for the city, but also achieving some debt service relief in the years 20 through 24 in order to enable to do some of these things. So what we're doing tonight is presenting the results of the sale that took place today. The pricing book that Lupi presented to you is, presents that summary, if you will. I'm gonna direct you, if you go to page three, which will give you the, an overview of the people that run the financing team. Astrid Huneaux, of course, was your financial advisor, has been so for many, many years. I'm with McCall, Parker, and Horton, is your bond counsel. Underwriters were led by JP Morgan, and UMB Bank was also a co-underwriter. Winstead, out of the San Antonio office, was underwriters' counsel. Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's both have given a rating on this. They have affirmed the city's AA rating. In fact, there was a rating presentation that I know that the city manager and the finance director attended up in Dallas, and those went very, very well as resulting from the, from the affirmation of your rating. And I might mention, as part of that, not only were they considering the issuance of these three issues that you're doing right now, but they also presented the expectations of the city to do some additional financings over the next year or so that are actually presented a little more so on pages, I think it's six and seven. We'll get to that in just a second. The results of the financing itself that we are doing tonight are presented on page five. In connection with your certificates of obligation, the commission is gonna be asked to consider an ordinance tonight to authorize the issuance of $5,960,000 in certificates. That will result, because of the original issue premium that was generated from the sale, that's gonna result in an actual deposit into your construction fund of $6.7 million to finance the projects for which that is being issued. The COs have a 20-year life, and they have an average coupon or average interest rate in the world of 2.82%. The tax exempt refunding, which is on the middle column, is refunding some 2010 certificates of obligation, I recall. That's gonna result in, I'll actually talk about the two refundings together, but, well, at least with respect to the tax exempt refunding, that interest rate is about 1.94%, and the taxable refunding is 2.31%. I might mention real quickly what the difference between we're doing a taxable refunding and a tax exempt refunding. Under federal tax law, which changed about two years ago, they no longer allow you to issue what we used to call advanced refunding bonds on a tax exempt basis. An advanced refunding bond is when your bonds that you're refunding are gonna stay outstanding longer than 90 days after you issue refunding bonds. So in this case, in order to achieve the purposes for which the City Commission and the city wanted to do, a portion of this is being done as a taxable bond because we're taking out some maturities that are gonna mature longer than 90 days after we deliver these bonds. The tax exempt bonds are refunding some obligations that will be redeemed on February 15 of 2020. So that's the difference between those two. I might direct you then, real quick, to pages six and seven. Page six, there's a lot of numbers there, but it presents the plan of finance that Noe presented to you back in, on October 1st. And on the left side is the, describes your outstanding debt, describes the debt that you're approving tonight, or at least what was presented at the time, and what you're anticipating to approve over the next year or so. At the time when this was presented, the expectation was that your certificates of obligation would come in at about a 3.42%. Because of the way the interest rates have declined over the last eight weeks, you're actually issuing the COs tonight for 2.82%, so it's a pretty significant savings over from what was anticipated just a couple months ago. Overall, the purpose of all these financings was to enable your INSS tax rate to stay essentially the same, right around 25 cents. That's what was projected when he presented this plan of finance, and if you flip over to page seven, you've achieved that. You still have a interest, INSS tax rate for the next about six or seven years of around 25 cents. That's been achieved with this refunding. And then the rest of this, Noe's just taken a shot of the first page of the official statement that went out to the market, and that'll be finalized with all the final terms of bonds. And then there's also rating reports that were just handed out. Those are to give you some additional information on how both Moody's and S&amp;P value the city in this transaction. That's Noe's part, and like I said, I'm not anywhere near as good as Noe. My part is, was, is very simple, and that is, you have two ordinances for you tonight in which we have taken all of the numbers that resulted from the pricing today, inserted those into the ordinances. They will accomplish, or if it's approved by the commission tonight, they will authorize the issuance of the COs in one ordinance, and then they will authorize the issuance of the two different series of Geo Refunding Bonds in the other ordinance, award the sale of those bonds to the two underwriters, and obliterates the city to levy a tax for those purposes, et cetera. And that, in a nutshell, is my part. I'm not sure if there's anything else that you'd like to add.
Just some points on page seven, Mayor Commission members. So back in October, on October the 1st, when Noe first presented this, part of what we wanted to do was tweak our capital program to create capacity by leveling off the debt over time, and that's what you see. what you see on page six. At the time, we were anticipating a higher interest rate, which was causing us to have a potential negative net present value in the amount of 401,000. If you go to the next page, on page seven, you'll see that the highlighted columns show that we had capacity for new money, which is a 6.7 million. We're also, in that next column, C, we also have capacity for the $7 million of Drainage and Water Development Board for the less than 1 percent of interest rate. And then the far column, D3, is the refunded portion, where we actually have a positive net present value of 139,000, or $1.8 million savings over the life of the loan. And part of why that was the key is that we wanted to create capacity for more capital projects upfront, which is what you see in the $30 million column on D2. So all the, what we did here is, we were able to restructure our debt, refund some debt, create capacity of $30 million, all within our current tax rate, and do it at a lesser interest rate than what we thought, creating a positive net transaction versus what would have been a potential negative, just to create that capacity. So because the rates dipped, we ended up getting multiple wins, and those are going from 3.42 to 2.82. That creates a positive net present value. We maintained both of our ratings. We created $30 million capacity to do the restructuring. And on the new money, we saved 500,000. So on that $6.7 million column, we're actually saving 500,000 also on the life of that loan because of the lower interest rate. So all in all, if there was, if there was a time to have done this restructuring of our debt, there couldn't have been a better time than now. So working, hard work sometimes pays off. In this case, luck also helped, and the timing helped. So finance did a great job at the bond rating meetings. Noe prepared us very, very well. But for all the work that we did, there are multiple wins here from a financial standpoint, and really savings all the way around.
Anything else?
Not for me, sir.
All right.
I'm going to read agenda item number eight, so we can vote on that one first before nine. Consideration and action on ordinance number 2019-1665, an ordinance authorizing the issue and sale delivery up to $6,850,000 in aggregate principal amount of City of Brownsville, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2019, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of annual ad valorem tax and pledge of certain surplus revenues of the city's municipal landfill system, and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent register agreement, a purchase contract, and official statement, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto.
Any motions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
That's both.
That was item eight.
That's item eight.
Yes, we're taking them up separate. Now, item nine?
Item nine.
Do you have any motions on item nine?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Action item number ten, consideration and action to approve professional services agreement with the law firm of Rolando Rios and Associates, PLLC, to assist the City of Brownsville with the once-a-decade process of redrawing city commission's district boundaries.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a professional services agreement from the Rolando Rios firm. Mr. Rios proposing to provide city services to re-apportion the commission districts. It is a process that is required in conjunction with your ten-year census, and we're going to have a brief presentation by Mr. Rios.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Rolando Rios. I'm a redistricting lawyer. I did the redistricting for the City of Brownsville in 2000, and in 2010, as well as for Cameron County. And I will be doing the redistricting for Cameron County this cycle also, and would be honored to do the City of Brownsville this cycle as well. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Did you do the last one? I'm sorry, I know you counted which ones you did. The last one that was done in 2012?
Yes, I did. I did it in 2000 and 2010. I may have been involved in 1990, but it's so long ago, I don't even, I've been doing this for thirty or forty years.
Because I had complaints. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rios.
Thank you for your confidence.
And now we have the board appointments. Action item number eleven, consideration and action on resolution number 2019-096, to accept resignation and appoint members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Elizabeth Walker. As you may recall, the commission adopted a board appointment policy by which it is, it now considers vacancies to citizen boards twice a year, June and December. So we did this first in June, and now we're back. We started the, for the December, with a social media campaign to encourage people to get involved, and I just wanted to report on the success of that campaign. We had nearly 600 clicks through the social media campaign to the board application webpage, and almost sixty applications filed. What you have on the dais is hot off the press. It is all those applications that we processed through noon today.
So I'll move to accept George Santori's application, and in his place, I would like to appoint District One Hector Guentejo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
We have item number twelve, consideration and action on resolution number 2019-097, to appoint or reappoint members to the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation.
For BCIC, there are four vacancies identified, of which two we have confirmed that they do desire reappointment. The following is the full list of those applications received with their districts identified. We just wanted to note, however, for the record, William Garza.
I'll move to appoint Tracy Wicket.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Tracy Wicket in a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I'll move to appoint, oops, sorry.
Hold on. Just to clarify, we have four, there's four vacancies here, correct?
Correct, and two that are willing to serve once more.
Okay. And I had noticed, there's no, well, there's nobody on the board from District One, correct? At least not as of now.
Not as of now, correct.
And there are applicants.
Okay.
I'd like to move to reappoint Commissioner Neese.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Commissioner Neese. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll move to appoint Michael Lemus for a second term.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Michael Lemus. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I would then move to appoint Brandon Muller, who's, I think, an applicant of District One.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
He's, I don't think he's on this list, but he did apply.
It's on, it's at the bottom.
Trey, have the specialist.
It's on the one that I, it's on the, it's on the, it's on this packet.
Just to confirm that he did.
I see his name. It's right there.
Yeah, he's here.
Well, it's on our hard copy, but not the digital copy.
Oh, oh, I have it hot off the press.
Yeah. I got the older one, which is fairly more updated. Okay, so motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to make, confirm, he does live there, because sometime, I've seen some people say that they live in District One, and then when I look at that, I just mean, like, that's one in District One, but, well.
Everybody wants to be in District One now.
Yeah, I guess so. It's a place to be, but, okay, yeah.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Action, board appointment number thirteen, consideration and action on resolution number 2019-098, to accept resignation and appoint or reappoint members to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
There's presently one vacancy due to a resignation.
There's one vacancy, you said?
Um, yes, my.
There is one, Alan.
Was it District Four is missing, right?
Mr. Russell resigned.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that created the vacancy, right?
Yeah, District Four.
Okay, so there's no representation of District Four? Okay. Okay, do you have any motions? Any nominations?
It has to be from District Four?
I don't, I don't know. The only reason I'm pointing this out is because I know our policy states something about every district being represented, if I'm not mistaken, Council. That's why I brought this up, and I think it's just good policy, if possible, to appoint.
If I could just add, Alan Garza, he did withdraw, withdraw his, his application.
Okay.
Okay?
My understanding, the policy doesn't negate that, Mayor, but I think that was the intent of this commission over one of the first few meetings, where the new members joined the commission. I know that that's something that the commission wanted to achieve.
Okay, I'll just point it out.
I'm surprised nobody from District One applied. That's very strange.
They're scared, scared of Abram. He's already got District One covered.
Apparently.
Okay, any nominations?
I'll move to nominate Ms. Castillo, to have the representative from District Four.
First name, Ben?
Vanessa.
Vanessa Castillo. Okay, we have a nomination for Vanessa Castillo. Do we have any seconds?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Number fourteen, consideration and action on resolution number 2019-099, to accept resignation and appoint members to the Transit Advisory Committee.
There are two vacancies presently on the Transit Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to call out, we have a typo. The mobile does not serve on this committee. So please just disregard the last row of this, of this graph.
I'll move to appoint William Garza.
We have a motion to appoint William Garza. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
One nay?
Who would nay?
William Garza.
One nay?
Excuse me, I understand that Mr. Garza is currently on another board?
Oh, okay.
Oh, never mind. I withdraw my motion.
Um, well, I've been to a few meetings of the Transit Advisory Committee, and in honor of Mr. Salazar, I think he played a critical role, because he used the transit for special needs. Is there any way we could find someone else who might fill his role? Because he provides a very, he provided a very unique, valuable perspective. Do you?
Well, we, we could go to our writers and let them know if they want to participate. That's the way he got involved. As a writer, he was very active in calling and letting us know, and then we recommended that he applied for the board, for the committee. I'm sure we probably have other committee members, or other users, but they haven't applied.
Would the commission like to table this item, and we can make perhaps a more targeted recruitment?
Well, and I think it's also important that we appoint people who actually use the bus as a mode of transportation.
I'll move to appoint Scott Fry.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Scott Fry. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
And then I'll move to table, so that we can maybe fill the other vacancy with someone.
Second.
We have a motion to table in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. So that's just tabling the second appointment, correct? Okay.
Number fifteen, consideration and action on resolution number 2019-100, to appoint members to the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee.
There are presently two vacancies.
So which categories are missing? Real estate, building industry, and one member from the ETJ. Do we know? Oh, okay, so we have the ETJ, so it has to be building, or...I see these people, but I don't know their...
Yeah, no category, so you're open to appoint.
Okay, I'll move to appoint Louis Leal.
He's outside city limits.
Is he?
That's what it says on my sheet. The first one, the first one had everything covered.
I'll move to appoint Juan Paganio.
We have a motion to appoint Juan Paganio. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
I move to appoint Carlos Garcia.
We have a motion to appoint Carlos Garcia.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. You are correct. We're unable to update the PowerPoint to reflect that we did confirm the outside city limits for the residency for Mr. Leal.
Number sixteen, consideration and action on resolution number 2019-101, to appoint commission members to the Amigos del Valle.
Did anybody apply to this?
No.
Because the first time, I didn't see anybody, so.
Amigos del Valle requests a commission representation to its nonprofit board of directors. So this would be one of you.
So they want one member of the commission, is that correct?
I thought Commissioner Gowan covered it.
I used, I was on it many years ago. It's very difficult to make. It's almost never in this part of the valley, and it's very difficult.
Is this by pace? Is this by pace?
No, it's in the west.
No, it's by the valley, but Victoria Palms.
Okay.
I think the meeting's on Westlaco.
We used to, we, we used to have the planning director, I'm sorry, go when, as, as the alternate, because it is very, if you have a job, it's very difficult, and you really spend your whole day to go up there and come back.
Okay.
Can it be a staff member?
I believe the official representative would be a member of the commission, but then the proxy would be identified, if you will, a member of the staff.
I think Commissioner Gowan just nominated somebody.
No idea. I just know that I can't do it.
She un-nominated herself. Okay, does anybody want to do this? Is there anybody who's willing to serve on this?
It's very strenuous.
I was there last time, and I, I had to resign. Couldn't do it.
See? It's not just me.
Nerth and John here is looking at John.
John, you have a nice escalator that drives to Victoria Palms real quickly.
It's also very tightly controlled by Upper Valley, so.
I think you could handle them.
I'll do it if no one else.
I'll nominate John Cowan, Commissioner John Cowan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to appoint Commissioner Cowan. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I would highly recommend that you appoint, I don't know if we can on the agenda, an alternate, because...
It says, members with an S, so I would think that you can.
It's in Ralph.
I'll nominate, who do you want? Your alternate? You pick.
What's that? What are we nominating?
You have to pick your alternate, yeah.
It can be anyone, or it could be?
It's got to be staff members.
When it's the meeting.
Yeah.
You want it to be the director of planning and redevelopment, it can be.
Okay.
There you go.
Is that a motion?
Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I nominate.
Okay, we have a motion then by Commissioner Cowan to nominate Director Vasquez. Any seconds? We have a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
That's always the hardest one to report, like.
It is, because it's very difficult.
Our heads are off to you.
I'll go deal with those up there.
You had to look for us.
Number seventeen, consideration and action on resolution number 2019-102, to appoint or reappoint members to the Brownsville Beautification Committee.
I'd like to move to appoint Juan Hernandez.
Second.
Second, we'll start there. Set this out real quick.
We got a second on that?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I move to appoint Anissa Ramirez.
We have a motion to appoint Alicia Ramirez.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. How many vacancies do we have?
Five.
There's five, although they have a unique membership and a maximum of twelve, so I would recommend, due to odd numbers, that it would be four for eleven.
I make a motion to appoint Juan Luna.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Juan Luna. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes.
I'll move to appoint Ernesto Lopez.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Ernesto Lopez and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I think I need a District One personnel.
So, we have one.
Yeah, we don't have any District One.
We'll have one more after this, I think.
Didn't she say four?
We saved that just for you, Commissioner, we called it out as vacant, reserved for District One. Okay, RD one.
Okay, but we'll still have, will we have someone after this one, the one that's on the floor?
That would be the fifth vacant.
Or I can not be a voting member, because I'm also on this as a voting member, which could be a possibility.
I think you still have one more left after this one.
Yeah, because I know we've, I think there's been two appointments so far. Is there none on this?
Ben? One, two, three.
Okay.
I've identified four nominations, Juan Hernandez, Alicia Ramirez, Juan Luna, and Ernesto Lopez.
Okay.
And did we vote on Ernesto Lopez?
Not yet. That's the one that's on the floor.
Okay.
Okay, what do we want to do? Okay? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on Ernesto Lopez? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, do we want another, then, from District One?
Lori Herrera.
Is that a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? All right. Thank you.
Number 18, consideration action on resolution number 2019-103 to appoint or reappoint members to the Greater Brownsville Improvement Corporation.
How many are there? For that one?
There's seven, Commissioner, there's two vacancies.
Two vacancies.
And I, I do want to discuss this, Council, and these two members that are coming up have been on the board for four months, and when they were appointed, there was no specification that they would only be appointed for a few months. There was some unexpired terms, some full terms, and it was never specified as far as who was filling which term. So I'd like to point that out, just, just so that everybody knows that, because we, there needs to be a process in place when you're filling unexpired terms to state that that individual is, is filling an unexpired term. Otherwise, I don't know who unilaterally determine that these are the ones that are coming up.
Do we want to table it so we can research and see? Because it might be different appointments that are up.
What I have in.
When they were appointed, it didn't specify which ones were coming up, or, because we did this, there was a couple that, that came up at one meeting, and then there was a couple that were appointed later, like I know that Mrs. Doudon, for example, was, I think, the last one that Commissioner Tetro appointed. Then at some point, I know that Commissioner Cowan or, I think, nominated Mr. Schaefer, if I'm not mistaken. So it's kind of been sporadic over the course of two meetings, maybe three, and it has not been specified that some terms are unexpired or would only be for a few months, so.
I think it's, it's noted when they're appointed, because just like it is here, it's, it shows when the term expires, but is there?
But there was people appointed, all, I mean, it was not specified.
It was chaotic, because we added, we added positions in, so it just got.
I can provide clarification. Dennis and Graham were appointed to replace Rick Longoria and Cesar De Leon.
Yeah.
And that was because of the, of the election.
Was that at one particular meeting? Because I don't think that was specified.
The first one we were first born in. And then afterwards, Nico got in to replace Jessica, who was absent, or she resigned. So Nico took Jessica's.
I think that's relieved.
My own notes may confirm the, the Commissioner's recollection.
So is there anybody on there that's been disqualified since then on the board for not attending, in other words?
Not the legal's aware. The process is that their director should notify the City Secretary and Management for a reappointment because of disqualification, but, and I'm not aware of that being noticed to either the City Secretary or the Department.
But then, I would ask Mr. Lozoya, is there anyone who is disqualified for absentee?
So we reviewed him actually this week, all the, the, all the members and their attendance, and nobody yet qualifies.
To be disqualified, you mean?
Nobody qualifies for disqualification.
Yes.
Yet.
Okay. Okay, well, in order to keep presence of the commission, which I think is very important because it provides some oversight by us on them, I would move to appoint Ms. Golansky.
To take whose position?
I don't think it's to take anybody's position, you're just being nominated to fill one of the vacancies.
There's no second, so it dies.
I'll, I'll nominate Dennis Sanchez for reappointment.
Who?
Dennis Sanchez.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue Mr. Sanchez's term. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Nominate to reappoint Graham Seaver.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Graham Sevier Schultz. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah, Mayor, to clarify your point earlier, this would be for full term starting this year.
Four years now.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item number 20, consideration action on resolution number 2019-104 for the creation of an Arts and Culture, Culture Task Force for vetting the prospect of creating a formal arts and culture committee and other duties as assigned.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a task force much like the LGBTQ. There is a couple, the, the resolution does state a couple of things. The appointments are made at the discretion of the mayor, and the, the expiration, or they must present a report to you back by October 2020. And so there are three actions, there are three actions by this committee. One, to try to determine whether the committee should be a permanent committee, a standing committee, and therefore with all the rules and bylaws and everything that entails that. Two, a potential submittal to the Texas Cult, Texas Cultural Trust for a cultural district designation, so it's really about bringing all the stakeholders together in that, in that, in that sphere of the community around, around a cultural district designation. There is some funding available through the state that's been allocated, about 10 million, that, it helps to have that designation. And then three, the determination of whether it, you know, whether it would serve a purpose to have this, this committee as a standing committee. So we asked for your approval tonight.
That was the first one. You said whether it should be a standing, and then you said Texas Cultural Trust. What's the third one?
Oh, potential creation of an Arts and Culture.
Okay. Plan, you said, right?
And like I said, it, it reports back to you October 20, 2020, I know later than October 2020, and, and we'll go for next.
Okay.
I'll move that we create it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Thanks.
Next, we have number 21, consideration action on resolution number 2019-105 to appoint members to the Charter Review Committee.
I'm going to ask that we table District Two, because the only applicant I have is already appointed to another board, and I feel like it's very important on this board.
So to that point, I have a question. It, is, since this is not a permanent committee, is it okay to appoint someone who's on another committee?
Technically, we, we have a rule against committee members serving more than one committee, other than commissioners.
Even though this is not a permanent committee?
Well, it's going to be a committee of the city, once it, it's organized, and I believe it was, I've, I've heard from at least some of the commission members that, that hope that, you know, that perhaps this is a committee that, that transcends just this initial stage, and, and perhaps always actively looks to make sure that our, that our charter is up to date. It all depends on what y'all want to do, but once we designate it, create it as a committee, I think the rule against multiple committee settings may gauge, other than for commissioners, of course.
I have a question. Are, are all of these up? Are we appointing all 12 positions? I think there, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine positions?
I think they're all fresh appointments.
Okay, so, I think.
What we provided for the commission is the, the last members, when it is that this Charter Review Committee previously convened, for your reference. But we, what we understand from the Charter Review Committee documentation now is that it should be seven members.
So one thing I just want to bring up, if there's going to be work done, and there's going to be any, were we talking about having these in the November elections of next year? Any, any bylaw changes? Or, I mean, we don't want to get delayed through two or three meetings with appointments.
Right. Yeah, because the, the ultimate goal for this is to have an election, if there's any recommended changes to the actual charter. So the discussions were, would we do, would we kind of hope for an election in May, or would we hope for an election next November? I think it would make sense to do in November. May's too soon, so November would be the goal, I think, on that. So obviously, the sooner the better in appointing, getting people appointed.
So should we each appoint one, and then figure out how to appoint the ultimate two?
That, that's, I think, I think that would be a good approach, Commissioner, because.
There's only nine appointments, and multiple, multiple or double.
What I was thinking is, the way we approached the Ethics Committee, like when I appointed Judge Resi, you appointed Ms. Uker, that sort of thing, where each Commissioner appointed one, I think that'd probably be the best approach for something like this.
Okay.
Whereas each member of the board appoints their, does their appointee, and that's it. I think that would be the best.
Can we have a deadline?
I'll move to appoint Esteban Cuevas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Tetro nominated Esteban Cuevas. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
You look like you have questions. Is everything okay?
I don't have any questions, actually.
Yeah, so I, I think each Commissioner should.
That was my non-question look.
Yeah, I think it'd be, it'd be easier if each Commissioner just had their appointee, as we did with the Ethics Committee, that, I think that would make it a lot easier, since it's kind of fresh, and, and let's just go for seven and do it that way.